All right, welcome everybody to the meeting of the regular, the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, April the 5th. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to conduct, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past for the protection of the public and our city staff. I am now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand feature option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment, or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called upon to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted to the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. Do we have any report out from our closed session?
Mayor and the public, council received information, considered items of labor negotiation as listed in the agenda report, in the agenda and provided direction. There's otherwise no reportable action.
All right, thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. Well, now I ask everyone to join us in a silent prayer, and we were going to do a moment of silence to honor one of our fallen constituents, Mr. Bill Forrest, who has passed away, and also to the victims of the tragedy in Sacramento recently. So please join me, and I'm going to silence in a prayer. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, April 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 9th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from council? Okay, moving on to item G, Public Comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment, or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
All right, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do have one public comment from Scott Robinson.
Okay, Mr. Robinson?
...story here in Galt, sorry, and believe it can be a great benefit in the city and the community. Cannabis is much more than just smoking pot. In the legal market, the majority of products are consumed orally and often at doses that are non-intoxicating. The idea of the lazy stoner is now replaced by the responsible adult who uses cannabis therapeutically for a number of reasons. Reasons like relaxation, anxiety and pain relief, and help with sleep. Not allowing cannabis stores in Galt does not minimize cannabis use. It does, however, force the community to purchase from the illicit market or leave the city and spend money elsewhere. This is a lose-lose for Galt. There are members of this community that have accessibility issues and medical conditions, and they would benefit from having close, excuse me, safe and affordable cannabis access. The city of Galt will also greatly benefit from tax revenue. This is money that Galt is missing out on and money that can be used to help youth programs, parks, and schools, among other things. Helping the community and adding to the city's revenue streams is a win-win for Galt. I have watched many city council and planning commission meetings where the topics of added revenue are discussed and some often, some options often seem to come with some potential negative impact to the Galt, or to Galt, especially when it comes to keeping the small-town feeling and integrity Galt is known for. Allowing retail cannabis will not negatively impact Galt and comes with great benefits. Please consider amending the current ordinance so that my wife and I can open a medical and adult-use cannabis store here. Give us a chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Do we have any other public comment?
Uh, no public comment.
Okay. Do we have any, no, no comment on the phone either?
No.
All right, we'll move on to item H, Presentations. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. At this time, I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Mike Selling, to come forward and speak.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. For those who may not have heard, as the mayor alerted to, alluded to a few minutes ago, we were informed yesterday that Bill Forrest, one of our senior engineers at Public Works, passed away suddenly on April 4th. Bill was a proud graduate of UC Berkeley, where he obtained his bachelor's degree in forestry. Go figure. That was in 1985. He then went on to complete a master's degree in civil engineering in 1993, and then started working for the county of Sacramento, where he worked for about 13 and a half years. Subsequently, in that time, he achieved his engineering license in 1997. Before coming to the city, Bill worked for, well, I noted he worked for the county. But when he was at the county, he kind of became the stormwater drainage guru. He was well-revered and people sought him out, basically, on their projects and things. So after he came to the city back in 2006, he was here for just about 15 and a half years, and was responsible for all aspects of development on the public works side. He was a stalwart engineer and was a wealth of knowledge for staff, myself included. I think all who knew him would agree that in addition to his engineering skills, he had a sharp wit and a fantastic sense of humor, that he enjoyed a good IPA, only heightened his, his, I guess, value in my book, if you will. So, so we'll all certainly miss Bill incredibly, and we want to extend our heartfelt condolences and prayers to his wife Diane, his son Liam, and his daughter Kira. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. Thank you for speaking on his behalf, and on behalf of myself and the city council. We also extend our condolences to his wife and his children, and I'm sure he will be certainly missed in our city, in our city. Thank you. Would any of the council like to say anything before I move on? Okay. Moving on to item I, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We'll start with the Vice Mayor, Mr. Sendu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On these regional committee, I just attended South Sacramento Conservation Agency Joint Power Authority on March 28th. We did discuss a lot of things, but I believe there's nothing to belong to Galt. And the only thing, it came from the executive director, which tell what will meeting continue? Because some of our director, they have meeting in Sacramento, just only, these meeting is just 30 minutes, so they tried to keep and continue on video. So next meeting will be on May 23rd. I will report back to you whatever happened on that meeting. And I also joined a public safety committee meeting on March 28th. The chief, he give the presentation on get involved Galt. He was giving very good presentation. The second thing we discuss, update on bylaws, council know we approved a few couple of council meetings. And third thing we discuss normally, traffic concern, stop sign, you know, speed bumps, speeding, all this we discuss, and chief was there. He maybe discuss with the city manager. Thank you. That's about the meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Papinow?
I was unable to make the Metro Air Quality Board meeting on short notice, and I think Councilmember Vandenberg filled in for me on that.
Yes, I did. Thank you. There's nothing of significance or anything at all to vote. They did discuss electric cars and hydrogen-fueled vehicles. Even you would not, may not imagine, but taking a train engine, converting it to a hydrogen unit and using it in practice, and larger vehicles, semis and stuff seems to be the trend, not so much vehicles, but that's mostly what was discussed.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I attended a CACOG board meeting on the 17th, and there we discussed the US Department of Transportation releasing a funding opportunity as it is connected to the rebuilding American infrastructure and with Sustainability and Equity Grant Program, and talked about how that was going to affect our area and what we could do in our Public Works and Community Development Departments to seek that money. The, we can't apply for it directly from the city. The approach that CACOG is trying to take is to consult with each other and put good projects forward. And so we're going to be working with our CACOG partners and county partners to see what might come of that. Much of it is going to be based on green zones, which a few years back, we approved almost our whole city as a green zone, and so look forward to that. The other big item was that we approved the MOU with CACOG Employees Association, and adopted salaries and the compensation and benefits for through June of 2027. And so that was a probably year-long process, and I think at the end of the day, that the cities, or the CACOG staff and employees came to a good agreement that is not going to hinder the viability of finances for CACOG, but certainly retention is a huge issue right now with, with any government agency, but I think they've done some things to, to address that, so. And then lastly, there is a Transportation Policy Committee meeting that I'll attend on this Thursday, and then a board workshop all day on Friday for CACOG, and so I'll attend that and report back out on that. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Myself, on March 16th, attended a cast meeting. It's the City and Schools Together. It was our first meeting of the year. It was good to finally meet and, along with our colleagues on the school boards, and come up with some, some initial kind of ideas about some things that are going to be important, and I look forward to the next one, which I believe is in May. And then I attended the Public Safety Meeting along with the Vice Mayor last Monday, and as the Vice Mayor mentioned, we had our usual topics, traffic safety being one of them. We also did have some informative information shared by some members from CSD on response times and some things that came up in conversation. It was very informative. And again, I encourage anybody to, that has concerns of public safety, to bring those to comment at those meetings. And then lastly, last night, I attended the Galt Youth Commission meeting. It was very nice. We talked about some things that the youth commission are advocating on behalf. We talked about the results of the event to the, at the job fair at Galt High School, and the youth leadership summer retreat, which is going to be in June. So it was a good meeting, and that is all I have to report on that. So it was a good meeting, and that is all I have to report on that. Moving on to item J, our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through four, excuse me, is recommended that items one through four be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent calendar? All right, with that, I will be looking for a motion to approve the... Actually, do we have any public comment on the consent?
No, no public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'll be looking for a motion, actually, if should you want to public, speak on public comment, you may do so, raising your hand on the, online, or I think it's star nine on the telephone, and we'll call on you. I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following items. Number one, minutes of the regular meeting of March 15th, 2022. Item two, receive and file warrants for a period ending March 23rd of 2022. Item three, the Treasury Report for a period ending February 2022. And item four, the approval of the final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Cedar Flats Estates, Phase Two. No further, no public comment, do you know?
No comment.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve these four items?
Moved. Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano? Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved five to zero. Moving on to item K, scheduled matters notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Next item L, from our regular calendar. First item's going to be for our, from our city manager's office. The subject is going to be the appropriation of $800,000 for a vacuum slash water truck, and appropriation of $300,000 to Consumne's Community Services District. Mr. Hines?
He had to step out, so if we just want to take a brief pause.
Okay, sure. And again, while we're waiting, if you have public comment on anything throughout the meeting, you can press star nine if you are on the telephone, or if you're in the audience, you can spell out a speaker sheet on the left, right, back, and bring it forward to the clerk. Again, we are just waiting on our city manager, Mr. Hines, to return to give us the staff Mr. Hines, we are ready for your presentation on item L1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you would indulge me for a few more seconds, we want to get you an updated version of the resolution that's sitting before you right now. All right, as far as our ongoing efforts to address the ARPA allocation that we received, back in October, we presented a, the ARPA item to the council, and basically laid out a proposed plan for allocating those dollars for the use here in the city. I'm on page two of four of the staff report. So in September 2021, one-time payments for essential workers of 155,000 or 156,000 were paid out with council approval of the labor contracts that we did back at that time. On December 21st, the City Council adopted a resolution appropriating $506,000 of ARPA funds for pool repairs for the Parks Department. City Council's currently delivering the proposed ARPA-funded litter abatement worker. City staff, myself and the Economic Development Director, Amy Mendez, are developing the Small Business and Nonprofits Program. We anticipate those programs will be released in the late spring 2022. What we are proposing before council this evening is to allocate an additional $800,000 for the purchase of a Vaccon or vacuum water truck, and also to appropriate $300,000 to the Consumne's Community Services District. Nattish Sharma is here, he is their admin chief, and so he's here to present the information on the $300,000. Mike Selling is here to present any information regarding using the ARPA dollars, the $800,000 for new Vaccon truck. So I'm going to head, we're going to go ahead and start with Mike. Let's go ahead and start with Mike, and since he's got the big Vaccon truck, and by the way, the Vaccon trucks, because of their size and just, just pure complexity, are just a fascinating vehicle to see. So I'll, I'll let you, I'll let Mike Selling give you more information.
Sure, thank you, Lorenzo. Yeah, Mayor and Council, as far as the Vaccon truck goes, the existing vehicle that we have was purchased in 2004 by the city. These, these vehicles are basically used for a variety of tasks, from cleaning sewer lines to, to doing repairs on water lines and storm drain lines and whatnot. Essentially, when they open up the road, basically what this machine is, is a truck. It's got two tanks on it. One is a tank for the debris that it sucks up. Imagine just a giant vacuum cleaner, if you will, something that can pick up chunks of asphalt and rocks and, and, you know, sand and gravel, that kind of power. And then there's a water tank on it, too, for the, and there's a hose reel essentially for doing the flushing of, of lines, on the sewer lines particularly. So this, this is a piece of equipment that's very frequently used, because we have to maintain our sewer lines, keep them clear, potential, you know, debris in there that can clog up the lines and that kind of thing. And then whenever there's a repair that's needed, this is the first piece of equipment on the scene, basically. So a very heavily-used piece of equipment, and I wish I'd have thought to bring you a picture of one, but it's a pretty quick Google. If you, Vaccon is actually a brand, but it's kind of one of those like Coke, right? Everybody refers to it, and everybody knows exact, in the industry anyway, they know exactly what you're talking about, whether it's actually of that brand or, or another brand. So again, we're about, you know, two, three years past the service life of the existing vehicle, and we've definitely been, you know, having to do some additional maintenance on this piece of equipment. We had planned to put it in the new two-year upcoming budget with the ARPA funds, and again, the, you know, the state of, of condition essentially on our existing unit. We saw an opportunity to maybe expedite that. And then also just looking at the current climate, you know, I think we're all heard, you know, it's starting to get a bit rote as far as supply chain issues and inflation. So, you know, to basically, if we can expedite the purchase of this vehicle, we can hopefully, you know, get it sooner, and also save the city some money, as we expect prices will only go up. And of the 800,000 we're asking, I would tell you, you know, from our current research that we've done, we expect the unit that would meet our needs to be probably somewhere currently in the 707,20 range, 720,000. However, we're asking for essentially an additional amount of appropriation, not knowing, you know, what inflation might do in the coming months, that kind of thing, because this will take probably a couple of months to take it to bid, and then we would bring it back for council's consideration to approve. So you're not approving the purchase of a vehicle tonight, it's simply just an appropriation of money, so then we can move forward on the bid process. And I'm available to answer any questions.
And, and I just wanted to add that on page two of four of your staff report, I just wanted to bring the council's attention that we had previously allocated $930,000 for infrastructure and water and sewer, and this vehicle is definitely a valuable purchase in keeping up that, that infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Hines, and thank you, Mr. Selling. So just to be clear for the public, on October 5th, we were presented with a suggested list of items, dispersal of the ARPA funds that the city of Galt receives, is receiving, receives some and still receiving more. And in that dispersal list, the council approved initially 900,000 to go towards Public Works for things in this wheelhouse. And so to be clear, you had, you guys had previously budgeted this out of your next budget cycle, but you decided to instead use, use this lump sum, or 800 of this 900, to do that at this time, is what you're asking for?
Correct.
Okay, do you know what the, I mean, what, what is the lead time on the truck? Do you know?
Yeah, it can vary. In talking to the manufacturers, and again, depending on what options you're kind of looking at, you're probably looking at a 90 to maybe 120-day timeframe for delivery.
Okay. That's the only question I have for you, Mike. Do any of my council have questions for Mike?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Selling, just for the clarification, the equipment we're going to buy is the same kind of equipment what we're using, or does it have a bigger capacity than whatever we have?
Yeah, great question, Vice Mayor. So this unit, some of the advances that, that these, you know, machines have, have had since we purchased ours in 2004, right now with ours, when the tank gets full of, you know, essentially the water that we've used to, to clean or whatnot, we have to take it out to the sewer treatment plant and dump it. This new unit has a filtration system into it, so it can recirculate the water, so it's basically a lot more efficient. You don't have to, you know, go back and forth to dump it as frequently, so. But otherwise, it's basically, you know, same concept, a giant vacuum, if you will, and, and then a pressurized water system, hose system for cleaning, so.
Thank you. And then next, my clarification, that equipment might be a year or year and a half, it will come, right, when we order it? And after we get the new equipment, what we usually do with the old equipment? Because since that, you know, used equipment have a lot of prices going up than usual.
Yeah, I think that is yet to be determined. Maybe just a quick clarification on the delivery. We would hope that we would get the new unit probably, you know, in 90 to 120 days from council approval, you know, and that's probably a couple of months out. So yeah, you're probably looking at five, six months or so before we would take delivery of the new unit. As far as the old unit, depending on the condition and what the market will bear, we would, at that point, look at, could we essentially sell it on the secondary market? The other thing that we tend to face in California is with the air emission standards, you know, always getting more stringent, is a lot of times, some of these pieces of equipment, even though they're still in good condition, they don't meet air emissions requirements, and so we, we tend to have to sell them on the secondary market, and they end up going out of state where they, they don't have a stringent air requirements. But that said, the other option is potentially, we may be able to use it further out at the treatment plant, and that would save the new unit from having to go out there as frequently, because this unit is basically spending time out on the streets, like I said, doing the repairs and the sewer line flushings, but it also does double duty, helping us out at the sewer treatment plant on various tasks when needed, so. So I would say, bottom line, I guess the short answer is to be determined yet. We may want to retain it, but we may consider selling it on the secondary market as well.
Thank you. Then next, my question may be with the city attorney. You know, we did last, I think it's $930,000 to win Public Works Department, and they have a certain guidelines to how we use the money. And I believe on the report, there is six guidelines, which guidelines we are using to use this money for the equipment?
The, the, the dispersments that were potentially, that council gave direction on in October, they were based upon what subject matters do we want to provide funding for? So example, some of them are nonprofits, some were CCSD, which is also on the agenda tonight. The particular appropriation that the city can use would either be the water sewer infrastructure appropriation category in ARPA, or just general revenue loss allocation, because the city has up to 10 million, essentially, it can use on general revenue, and general revenue loss can be used for any governmental services, which this would apply. So at least two of the six eligible categories would apply here.
But I'm talking about this particular equipment, which category we're going to apply?
Vice Mayor Sandu? So out of the six categories that we see here on the first page of the staff report, this, this purchase can be categorized as, under the sixth bullet, invest in water sewer and broadband infrastructure, so we can use those dollars to reinvest in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. So this Vaccon is responsible for cleaning the water and sewer infrastructure. So it applies under that category. It also applies under the fourth category, which is the replacement of lost public sector revenue. Because our appropriation is under $10 million, we have the ability to use these funds pretty much in any way we see fit. So it actually fits two of the six categories.
Thank you. That's my question, is which one we apply to?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Does anybody, does any of the council have any further questions for Mike before we go on to the, we're going to do this together, the CSD, this is one item, correct?
Right, right. And CSD's coming up next, and after, there's no more questions for Mike?
Yeah, real quick. In our prior discussion, the city policy currently is that it's our responsibility to take care of sewer problems between property line and the city main. And we talk to, once a month or so, or something like that, as we hit that. So is this, would this truck be what would respond each, each time to those?
Yes, typically, yeah.
It's kind of an emergency response vehicle, otherwise we leave the homeowner sitting on the hook, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's definitely, great question, council member. Yeah, this, this vehicle is one of the first to respond, essentially, if not the first, other than maybe police or something, but when there is a water line break, say, or, you know, any kind of repair that's needed on, you know, water sewer lines or sewer stoppage, this is, you know, at least Public Works' first vehicle out there, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have, I think I'm going to let CSD go next, and then we'll see if there's public comment, and then we'll go back to council for any further discussion.
Very good. Okay, I'd like to introduce Nattish Sharma. He is the Chief Administrative Officer for Consumne's Community Services District, and he's going to present, do a presentation on the proposal before you for the allocation of $300,000. Nattish, we're kind of low-tech here, so if you could just call out when you want us to advance the slides, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So nice to be in this city hall. It's been a while since I left the last city hall, but special district is a little bit different, so really appreciate being here and be able to provide you a little bit of the update on the ARPA funds that Consumne's CSD is requesting, and, and with your support, we're hoping to move on multiple items that we actually, as an agency, deferred or suffered during the COVID-19. So next slide, maybe?
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you, there's, I'm, we're getting like a high-pitched feedback from the microphone. I don't know if maybe, maybe try moving the mic a little bit back from, maybe just have the, they might have the mic up too loud, but I don't know if anybody can hear it.
Right.
Is this good?
Go ahead, say, say again.
Good?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, definitely, before I go into the, the subject or in the presentation, just want to present to you our mission and vision as your fire agency, and to provide innovative, inclusive, intentional services to all... inclusive, intentional services to all the citizens that we serve. Next slide. The funding that we're requesting from the City of Galt will address a number of these values that the Consumne CSD has, safety in mitigating risk, financial responsibility, high quality workforce, service to the community, and a little bit of the diversity, equity, and access. We'll touch pretty much a lot of these areas. Next slide. So a brief overview, just going to talk about what, you know, our response was during COVID-19. A little bit, talk about the revenue calculator. I believe you must have a copy of the packet that now, so I'm going to be walking through slowly on that. We also want to talk about the district's fiscal contingency plan. As, as you may have heard in your presentations, the revenue loss is one of the eligible categories for our ARPA funds. But we, as an agency, or many agencies, if, based on the revenue loss, we had to make adjustments on the actual side. So if we don't have money in our bank account, we can't pay for stuff. So we made some adjustments on our actual bank account to ensure that we don't create a, a financial challenge for the district and the resources that we have, and the, and the resources that used to provide the services. We also talk about, a little bit about COVID-19 reimbursements that we have received. So just want, want a full disclosure, transparent of the monies we have received, and talk about some of the next steps that we're looking forward to. Next slide. So COVID-19 response from the district, we were the, the fire department in Sacramento County that were the vaccine hub, that all the, the regional fire agencies, their, their vaccines were at our location. We managed all the distribution of that. We also provided vaccine clinics. We actually did a couple of them in, in City of Galt as well. And all this work was done prior to any regard to the funding at all. We just knew that was the right thing to do. And we, as an agency, for the City of Galt and then for the City of Elk Grove, we, our board, supported our initiative, and we provided services to, to many, many public safety employees, school teachers, and other, other individuals that were eligible for it. COVID-19 funding bill, as you are aware, that the, the ARPA funding, most of the, the allocation of funding went to the counties, state, and cities. Special districts were left out of that funding. And we are a little bit unique as we have the fire and parks district, we're not just a fire district, or just a parks district. And so we were not part of the funding plan until the state of California put together $100 million, and then we were eligible for, for some allocation on that. Consumne CSD, as just the allocation of funding from the, from the, any federal funding, we are basically excluded from that as a special district. Next slide. So you have seen this slide before. Our chief, Fire Chief Felipe Rodriguez, presented this slide to you. I won't repeat this slide again, but my opportunity is to highlight some of the work we did with, and with our partner, City of Galt, and the Galt Unified School Districts to provide COVID-19 vaccines. We did about 2,400 vaccines to Galt community, elderly residents, educated, and essential workers. And we also did the vaccine at the Galt Flea Market, as you could see, about 700. And then, you know, Police Department, we provided vaccine for them as well, as well as Elk Grove Police Department. Next slide. So revenue loss calculator is one of the eligible for reimbursement or for funding is the revenue loss. The Government Finance Officers Association developed a revenue loss calculator, that is this, it's in front of you, I believe. And if you look at this, this report, what you'll see is that the revenue reduction for Consumne CSD was 17.9 million, based on the methodology that was, that was set forth by the, the ARPA requirements. And today, we want to present to you that our initial estimate was about 14 million. Then we did the revenue loss calculator as well, 17.9 million. And that's only for general fund. District-wide, we have Parks Department as well, Park Operations, our district-wide revenue loss calculator was 24.8 million. 17.9 million is what we submitted to the state of California as well, as the revenue loss for the, for the district in order to secure funding from the state of California. And also, if you look at your packet, you'll see that there's a staff report from City of Elk Grove attached to it as well. And that includes the same 17.9 million that the City of Elk Grove used to, to allocate a million dollars to us as an agency. Next slide. Just a little bit on the fiscal contingency plan. This is basically us making adjustment when we, as you may know, that we operate a very large recreation facility and programming. And for us, we had direct, direct impact to our service delivery and our budget. So as an agency, at that point, when we, when we, when we, the coronavirus was emerging at that time, we made adjustments to our budget. We basically looked at, what can we do as an agency to, to monitor our costs, reduce our expenses, and ensure that we don't put district in a financially unstable position? We make adjustments in salaries and benefits, part-time help that ran at recreation programs. And this was during, actually, at the beginning of the, the March and towards summer, when most of the recreation programming are, are happening. We actually did not hire those positions and us, and we were able to save 1.9 million. We also did a fiscal contingency plan to materials and supplies. Only things that are needed is what we're authorized to be purchased. Otherwise, we pushed everything off in order to manage the, the cash outflow and the budget challenges. Couple of things that are also important, that capital outlay, we had about $5.5 million of capital improvements, as you have seen today from Mr. Sells about the VACON truck, and how it was in the next year's budget and moving it up. We also had these items budgeted for Engine 45 and Engine 46, 1.7 million, cardiac monitors. This is basically a equipment that is on every ambulance. And when, when our paramedics respond, and they basically take this equipment and ensure that, that, you know, the, the patient is taken care of. So we had about $900,000 of cardiac monitors, a letter truck, 1.7 million, and a couple of medic replacements of $800,000. There were other things that were also deferred. I didn't list all of them, but just wanted to highlight some of the things that we did as an agency to ensure that, how can we mitigate our actual loss? COVID refund, as mentioned before, 17.9 million was the revenue loss calculator. We did receive reimbursements from City of Elk Grove. We were also very successful to receive reimbursement from state of California of 3.9 million. And, and we are seeking today funding of $300,000 from City of Galt to directly benefit the, the things, the, the stations, the service we provide in, in City of Galt. For example, the, the fire engine we talked about, or other things that we, we, the other two stations, the services we provide. And capital outlay, some of the funding from state of California or City of Elk Grove is going towards the other items like the, the cardiac monitors and things like that, so that we are directly benefiting the, the community. Today, my goal is that, to walk through any questions you may have from what's been presented. We also included a letter that I sent to Mr. Heinz, the city manager, that describes each category of the, the fiscal impact. And it also talks about the expenditure plan on, on the, the things that we, we are seeking funding to, to do. For example, ambulance replacements, and some of the other facility type replacements as well.
So I wanted to just piggyback on to the presentation. And when we presented this item, CSD had not yet received those dollars from the state. And so they were, not so much looking, but Elk Grove and, and I felt that we had to find some way to support CCSD during this time. Subsequent to that meeting, they did receive 3.9 million. Elk Grove chose to continue their commitment to CSD and give them that 1.2, the million dollars that they had initially pledged. I, at that time, felt that, I felt that we also needed to continue our pledge to CSD. If anything, to send a signal to our firefighters, to let them know that we support them, and that we want to see them to, we want to see them succeed. And so I just wanted to make sure council knew that. When I had talked to CSD initially, I did get a guarantee that these dollars would be used for Galt operations only. Galt fire and medical operations only. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll leave it to you all for questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sharma. And thank you, Mr. Heinz, for adding that last bits of information. That was actually one of my questions. Because initially, I, in full disclosure, I spoke to city attorney today about a verbiage that I, in here, and I just wanted to clarify with him. In the initial staff report, it said that the money was to be for the enhancement of services to Galt. And I felt the word enhancement seemed a little, like, I didn't want to, I had a citizen come to me, and, oh, we're getting, what are we getting new? I was like, well, this is, you know, this is more like to make sure, you know, there's facility maintenance, loss of funds. I mean, you know, as he said, it's going to Galt. But I just, I felt like the word, and I like the word support better. It looks like, in the actual resolution, it looks like the word support is used in support of an allocation. So the word enhancement is no longer used in here. So I, I like that. That was only a little bit of a, I know it might seem like a small thing, but it just, to me, I didn't want to get the wrong impression to the public. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sharma before I go to public comment?
Just only the comment. First of all, Mr. Sharma, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for giving us a detailed presentation. And your request is a reasonable, I will support their request. My question was same thing, Mr. Heinz already clear. I want to make sure the citizen, Galt, they understand this $300,000 we allocated, it will be used in City of Galt. Is that right, Mr. Sharma?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone?
I have a question. And I apologize for not getting with you ahead of time, or your general manager. But having just received this, question is this, you, you had a slide up there that said 1 point, I think it was 1.4 million dollars was being allocated to replace two engines. Is that right?
Yes, it's, it's an allocation. And the $300,000 will help us with the engine that we, we are, we are in the process of, you know, it takes a year and a half. We made a commitment already, so it's going to go towards that.
Sure. And, and those engines, they were identified as Engine 46 and 45, right?
Yes. And we have other engines that we also did. But our, what we committed to do is that the $300,000 we're going to be spent on the, the equipment or the services that are in Galt.
So, so the total cost of those two engines is 1.7?
Seven.
Seven million?
Yes.
And we're, we're chipping in 300,000?
Yes.
Got it. All right. And those will primarily work down in the Galt?
Yes.
Or city, but certainly will.
Yes.
Out in the county as well.
Our plan is to do both replacements. But initially, we're going to do one engine, the Engine 45 or 46, I'm not sure which one are the more critical one. But $300,000 will be put into, into the community right away.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if we have no further questions for Mr. Sharma, I think we will see if there's any public comment before we move any, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have Bonnie Rodriguez, representing Galt Chamber of Commerce.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening, council. On behalf of the Galt District Chamber, I was voted this morning to come and speak to you on the ARPA funding. And I would like to start off sending the chambers and my personal condolences to Bill Forrest's family and to the City of Galt and all the staff members. I know this is, it affects wide. I do have to be honest, as I was sitting here thinking, when it was announced, I was thinking, you know, there's always opposition, or not opposition, but a balance. And Bill had such a deep voice that was very, so someone's going to have to step up to fill that in the planning meetings and, and these meetings. But I know people are very difficult to replace physically and bringing all that institutional knowledge. But it's almost impossible to replace them personally. So my condolences. On behalf of the chamber, I'm here to say we are ready to go. And it was great to hear Mr. Heinz announce that he and, and Amy Mendez are working on a small business ARPA funding program. We have been sitting, waiting, we're ready. I know that Ms. Mendez has come and spoke to our office manager and trying to figure out some programs that will be helpful for this, for the local businesses. I'm excited to hear that funding is being spent, because we have 800,000 going toward a truck, we have $300,000 going to CSD. We had the other allocations that happened. So we feel like it's, we're waiting, it's our turn. So we're hoping that the attention that was given to these other allocations can now be turned to help the businesses. You know, our businesses here in town, as everyone knows, has struggled. Some have done better than others, some are still hanging on, on threads. We really appreciate the help that Ms. Mendez has been, and other staff members have stepped up. But I know that Ms. Mendez is kind of an army of one right now. Now it sounds like it's an army of two, if we can get maybe a few other people to help move this along, because our businesses really, really need some help. Our, our office worker has been pretty much working more than full time, helping people fill out different grant processes. And, and from all walks of life, she's ready to help with this. And just so that you know, she has over, gone over and above what she has been asked to do, because she has been helping non-chamber members, she has been helping anyone who's come in, either called or walked in. She's there till all hours of the night, helping them fill out these grants. She's, I feel like she's becoming a little bit of an expert. So we're ready for the city to send us their grants so we can help everyone. So we're waiting, you know, for this army of two, hoping it's joined in. We're ready for our marching orders. And we hope that it can happen sooner than later, because our businesses are still trying to dog paddle up, get their head above water. So hopefully, we can get some movement with that sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And thank you for the condolences from the chamber for Mr. Forrest. Do we have any other public comment?
No public comment.
No hands raised online, or, I'm sorry, on the phone, I guess?
Uh, no.
Okay. Should you wish to comment on this again, if you are on the phone, star nine, I believe, to be called upon. I just want to say, before I go back to the council, so looking over, you know, our staff report, everything, seeing that, you know, the City of Elk Grove did allocate 1.2 million, it's roughly about 5% of the money that they received from ARPA. The 300,000 that we are being asked to give, which we initially were presented with back in October, is about the same. So it's, it's a fair allocation for what we're getting in our total. So, I mean, I was happy to hear that that money will be used for us, for our city. So I do support personally giving the 300,000. I think it's fair, and it, and it would be a good gesture on our behalf. But with that, I also, which wanted to make a comment, it kind of falls in line with, actually, what Ms. Rodriguez said, was, I was noticing, you know, we, I was attached with our staff report, was our old staff report from October 5th, which is six months ago today. And in that staff report, we had, you know, gone out to the community to get input from the community on how they would like to see those dollars spent. Well, the top two were maintenance of repair of city parks facilities, 68%. And second place was 50% at helping our small businesses. And, and I was not surprised to see that, because those are important things to the community. And I'm glad that we are, are set to do that. But I just want to emphasize, which I'm glad Mr. Heinz made comments to this effect, but I just want to say that we are now six months past that, and we still haven't really spent any money on those two top things, with the exception of the pool money, to the pool repairs. But that's still, you know, working out some details on that. But outside of that, I, I said, I think, I think our businesses and have been more than patient, I feel. And I hear from them, I hear the nonprofits always ask me, hey, when are we going to, I said, we're working on a program, you know, they're working on it, it's complicated. But I just really want to bring that to light, that we are dispersing money. But I feel like we're dispersing in a kind of a roundabout way, and we still haven't really touched on the top two things that were important, and it's six months. So I just wanted to make that statement. But I do support the 300, and I do support the months. So I just wanted to make that statement. But I do support the 300, and I do support the, if Public Works wants to use their, their piece for their truck, then I don't have any problem with that either. So, any comment, any comments from other council on this subject?
I'd simply like to say, thank you to, you know, CSD for all the support they provide. We're the beneficiaries of great support, and it's greatly appreciated. I fully support funding the 300,000.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the board and the entire executive team and the consumers CSD team, we appreciate this, the support from, from each one of you and for our communities. Thank you so much. And our city manager as well, and our city attorney, who is very good, thank you as well.
All right, thank you, sir. Any further, any other comment from anybody in council? Do we have any public comment, any additional?
No additional comments.
Okay. Well, with no further comment and no questions from council, we'll be looking for, we're looking for an motion to adopt a resolution to, one, authorize an appropriation of $800,000 for the purchase of a VAC slash water truck, and number two, authorize an appropriation of $300,000 allocated to Consumers Community Services District to enhance, to support. Sorry, I just, do I have to say that? I mean, I brought up, it's not in the resolution, but it says it on my agenda, so. I'm not, because I read from the agenda, not from the resolution, so should I read from the resolution?
You can just read from the title of the resolution, or you can say approve resolution number, the resolution authorizing those appropriations as presented.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve a resolution for the two items presented.
So move.
Second.
I don't know who was first there. Okay. Moved by Councilmember, everybody's so fast. Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg is seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Resolution's approved, five to zero.
And Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I just have one comment. Obviously, I'm thankful that we're supportive of those two items. I too, at the last meeting that we heard, the items on ARPA funding, brought up not only the small business issue, the small business impact funding, but also the nonprofits' funding. And, and I know Mr. Heinz has been working on that. I appreciate the work. It, it, but it does need to move pretty quickly, as, as we have those businesses and, and organizations out there that have been continuing to scramble. And so, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for coming and presenting that, and it certainly need to move forward. But I think, now that we've cleared your plate a little bit, and we'll have some time to do that. Thanks.
All right, thank you, council member. All right, moving on to item two, also from the city manager's office, is the subject is the strategic plan for 2021 through 2023 spring update. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's 2123, I'm sorry, 2021-2023 strategic plan was adopted on January 18th, 2022, not three months ago. Per its adoption, the strategic plan is to be presented to the city council at a city council meeting on a quarterly basis to review our progress to date. Tonight, I will present our progress of the first quarter of 2022. I would refer the reader and the council to the first page of the staff report. As you can see, that I've put the 2224 budget calendar on the staff report. I have checked off the items that we have gone through, and that would be the mid-year update and all of the ancillary reports. The 2021-2023 strategic quarterly update, I've moved that item up from April 19th to tonight. It was ready to go, and I figured, let's, let's get it on, on the docket, and that way, that leaves more room for the narrative budget presentation on the 19th. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to take, I'd like to take you through our progress thus far. And so, I'm going to start on page two of three of the strategic plan, and this is priority, the economic development. And, and while we're on that page, I just want to reiterate for everyone listening that our strategic priorities for 2021-2023 are economic development, improving fiscal sustainability, maintaining and improving Galt's quality of life, city council roles, internal succession planning, traffic mitigation, housing, and improving C Street. And so, with economic development, we have, staff is currently on, staff is currently researching the feasibility of a development impact fee deferral program to offset the upfront costs associated with new development projects. We anticipate having this rolled out in the next few months, probably in the summer. As far as our focus on retail attraction, our economic development manager, Amy Mendez, recently went to the International Council of Shopping Centers Retail Trade Show. During the trade show, she had several meetings with retailers and to market available properties here in Galt. There was significant entry, interest in the fast, from fast food casual restaurants and retail users for both the 45-acre Simmerhorn commercial property and the 12-acre site on the SEC of Twin Cities Road and Corollian Boulevard. We'll be coordinating with the developers of both sites to look at opportunities. The city also approved the Fairfield Residential Project. That includes 19,000 square feet of neighborhood serving retail at the corner of Corollion and Walnut. I'm going to move to the next priority, which is improving fiscal sustainability. And so, the, the, the task there, or at least the task in the, the first on the list, is quarterly reporting and periodic council briefing on revenue sources and expenditure utilization. Mid-year budget update and the long-term financial plan were presented to council on March 13th, I'm sorry, March 15th, 2022. So we've started the process of periodic reporting to council. We'll be looking at revenue opportunities as we explore the 2224 budget, and that will also include optimizing Measure R, and we will also be looking at near-term revenue enhancements. So those items are in play right now. The next priority is maintaining and improving Galt's quality of life. The first task, or the task, task listed here is complete the Galt Market Plan Visionary Document. And so, we did explore additional utilization of the market property. The visionary document was presented to council on January 18th. Staff was directed to begin holding workshops on July 19th, 2022, to discuss possible implementation. And so, we will look to have those workshops either at the last meeting in July or the first meeting in August. The next item is the completing the phasing and funding of Walker Park Improvements, and the Walker Park Improvement Plan was also approved, presented to council on January 18th, 2022. Council gave staff the direction to continue efforts to bring the plan to fruition. Exploring additional hours and types of operation for a weekend market. And for those folks who were here on Saturday, you saw a grand example of this goal, this strategic task coming to fruition. The council approved a pilot Saturday market on January 18th and February 1st, 2022. We had the first initial market last Saturday. It was very, and I do mean very, well-attended. And I was pleased, as your city manager, I believe members of the council were also pleased to see so many folks there. I, I talked with the staff, and a couple of the vendors had to go home early, because they sold out so quickly. We had a number of vendors while I was there who were selling out, who were looking to scramble to figure out what they were going to do. So those are all good signs, and so I'm, I'm very pleased to announce that strategic task is doing really well. And exploring options to address litter abatement with, litter abatement within the city, and I'm on the next page, six of 13. The city council is currently deliberating a proposed ARPA-funded litter abatement worker, and so we're working on that as well. Ensuring public outreach and communication with the community. So our commissions and committees continue to hold workshops and outreach meetings prior to public hearings in order to engage the community. So that's our, that's our strategy for improving the quality of life here in Galt. The next priority is city council roles. One of the strategic tasks was to target our council meetings to four hours based on the start time. We're not limited to four hours, so we're more than happy to stay here until midnight, but we're going to target four hours from the start. Council meetings since January 18th have averaged 2.5 hours per meeting since the adoption of the strategic plan. That would have been three hours, however, we had one meeting that was about an hour and a half, and that sort of skewed our average. So, so we are sitting at two and a half, two and a half hours. Internal succession planning. So we've got recruitments going on for several positions, or I'm sorry, recruitments for several positions remain challenging, as we are competing in the same region as larger higher pay, payer agencies, paying agencies. Our human resources shop is often required to extend application deadlines or reopen recruitments. And so, we remain hopeful, as our finances continue to stabilize, that we'll be able to make adjustments to compensation to make us more competitive. As far as building the bench, in calendar year 2021, we promoted from within 22 employees. From January through March of '22, the city promoted from within nine employees. We've made great efforts to fill vacancies from within the organizations. Many times, we've been able to convert part-time folks to full-time positions by posting the jobs internally. As far as growing our people and providing education and training, the human resources continues to offer employee training in various areas, from compliance training to soft skills training. And so, under number three, we've listed a number of trainings that we've provided during calendar year 2021, and that include anti-discrimination training, respect in the workplace, art of writing, the performance evaluation, accident investigation supervisor training, and cybersecurity training. From January through March 2022, public sector employment law update, discipline in the public sector, just various training opportunities that we provided our staff. And lastly, and this is the one that I'm pretty proud of, the city has enrolled two staff members within the, with management potential in the 2122 Sacramento Valley Leadership Academy, and that academy has attendees from all of the governmental agencies in this region. And so, we've got two very bright folks that show management potential, representing Galt in that program. So I'm very pleased. Redefine Galt as, the City of Galt is a learning organization, so we've reinstituted the tuition and reimbursement program effective July 1st, 2021. We want to help folks get through school. Traffic mitigation. Staff completed traffic counts for and reviewed Corollion intersections at Vauxhall and Lake Canyon as directed by council. Staff made repairs and minor modifications at pedestrian crossings. We've trimmed trees and reviewed all signage, and so we believe no further action is needed at that time, as far as making those areas safe. Staff are in the process of procuring two-speed feedback trailers, as approved by council as well. So Public Works continues to keep our roadways as safe as possible. The second item listed there is research of the feasibility of a preliminary evaluation of a quiet zone. So we entire, we inquired with Union Pacific Railroad on the process and invite, and advised council of the requirements and the estimated cost. We, at this point, advise no further action at this time because of the level of the anticipated cost. Conducting outreach regarding the requirements placement of various signs in our community. We conducted a Traffic Engineering 101 workshop back in October of 2021. Continuing our solution-based approach to inquiries and requests, those efforts are ongoing. The next priority is housing. Updating the 21 to 29 housing element, and staff is currently working with the department, State Department of Housing and Community Development to develop our document, which we hope will be certified by the state soon. As far as meeting state housing requirements, the city has submitted our 2021 annual general port, general plan report to satisfy our state reporting requirements. As far as exploring proactive partnerships to develop positive projects, the city has recently approved the 172-unit Fairfield Residential ForRent Town Housing Project. This project provides housing diversity that has not been developed in Galt for over 30 years. This project helps meet our rental housing needs. The next item is pursuing multi-generational family projects. City staff is working with home builders to develop these, develop homes with built-in accessory dwelling units or accessory housing units and residential suite options. The priority for improving C Street, we have not endeavored in moving these strategic, these tasks forward since January. However, by the time that I come back to you in June or July, there will probably be some activity there. And, Mr. Mayor and council, that concludes the update. I did want to just hearken back to the last issue, just to make sure that council knows that I, I understand and I hear them, as far as the business plan for getting the ARPA dollars out to businesses. I, I did not get a chance to say that earlier, but I do hear you, and we've talked to Citrus Heights, we've talked to Rancho Cordoba, and we're also looking at Elk Grove, and we're kind of, we're learning about best practices for these cities that have rolled out these, these programs before. They also have more staff that they can throw at it, so Amy and I have to be more stealth and more efficient about how we do this. But we want to definitely understand how the others are doing it. So I wanted to let you all know, we hear you. Okay? And that concludes the update on the strategic plan.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
No public comment.
Do we have any questions for, or comments for Mr. Heinz on the strategic plan update?
I, I just have a real quick item. As far as the tuition reimbursement, don't need to answer now, but is there a way to get a, the policy and/or the MOU language that addresses that? Just for, I don't, again, don't need it right now, but just so we know kind of what that entails.
Sure. Our human resources director, Stephanie Van Steyn, will be happy to provide that.
Okay. And then, the second thing is just really a comment. I, I think it's important to bring the strategic plan to the community in a quarterly fashion, and as discussed before. I think it really outlines what work is going on currently and what the future looks like. Oftentimes, in government, you know, we, we always wonder what they do behind the, under the dome or behind the walls of City Hall, and why, why things are prioritized the way they are. And, and I appreciate our, the, the strategic plan coming, because that's really the, the document that we, as a council, have said, this, these are the priorities. And so, appreciate that, and I hope the public was able to hear it and, and certainly give input to us as, as, as we move forward as to what the priorities are. And so, thank you for all the work, Mr. Heinz, as well as the rest of the staff on the movement on the, on the strategic plan. There's tons of work done, so I appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you-
Thank you, Mr. Hines, gave us a good report. The only thing I would like to make a comment on the economic development, and we all know Amy Mendez, she's doing her best because she went out there to the convention, she talking to the developer, and she know what developer, how the developer can be in success. You know, our, especially last time when we reduced the fees on a infill, on a housing, and then we also ask if they can bring back with the commercial. I do understand she's working, or staff working on the fee development program. A lot of city is, is doing the same way, I believe, of we are moving forward. And I also like to mention to the staff for, because we do have a little bit problem in this city infill, small lots. And we know when somebody tried to develop a half acre, quarter acre, two acre, five acre, instead of somebody developing a 20, 50 acre, they have the same fees, almost equal. If you're developing a half acre, this can be hundred thousand dollar, and traffic study is the same way. So in this city, there are a lot of lots, small lots, we have to find a some way, I'm just requesting with my constituents, if we can do something so we can have a infill project coming. I talked to some of the developer, they have a half acre, and there, some of their fees is very much as compared to the 20 acre. If any developer is developing a 20 acre, he pay hundred thousand dollar for sequoia, I don't think so, in my opinion, have any problem. But if somebody going to develop a half acre, two acre, and they charging almost the same money, it's not that much difference, it is a problem. So that's, I would like to, you know, mention something. I talked to some developer, they have a small lots in this city, and do something because there's comparison, even, even if they bring any project, I know, I don't want to be, you know, give up any money from Public Works Department impact fees, I don't want to give any money from the other department, but at the end of the day, if that person bring their project, he stuck with that, then we can, we can maybe little bit lose in the front end, but we can get that money back. And that's, I like to mention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Vandenberg, you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, I think Papa's and Wings is a good example of that, is we help them out, and instead of an empty building, we have a, a running business, which is really good to see. I like what Councilman Lozano said about bringing this to the public. It's, it's not often enough, or maybe it's, it's better that it's doing it this often, excuse me. And I don't want this to sound like dogpiling, so, but thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for bringing up the topic of the businesses. It's in the same vein that I spoke last week about the parks and recs. Those are both areas where there's a tangible sacrifice by the citizens of Galt. And, and I, so I'll just cut to the quick. What, what is the timeline we could expect?
So the timeline, because we're also working on a budget right now, too. So that's why I'm anticipating this, we will be rolling this out by late spring. Because we've got to, now that we've gathered best practices, now we have to come up with a program that fits Galt, but also has the integrity of those other programs. And so that's what Amy and I have to put our, that's what we have to sort of wrap our heads around and start designing this program. There's also, you know, the actual implementation, the intake, and so we have to figure that out as well. So that's going to take a minute because I'm juggling that and pretty significant budget issues as well. As far as the number one category, parks and recreation, Director Solis presented me with a proposal last week that I will probably be bringing to you on April 19th, which utilizes ARPA funds for the replacement of playground equipment. And so that'll be coming to you. It is significant, it will most likely take most of the parks allocation that remains.
Of the ARPA funds?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is significant.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, just, I had a few comments, but I'm going to cut down a little bit on them. Just, I want to say thank you, Paul, for bringing that up because it is true that we do have some info on that particular subject. I was noticing items four and five on the, on our strategic plan. Number four is meeting the state housing requirements, but staying flexible for other opportunities. And number five is explore proactive partnerships to develop. So those two things made me think of, of what the Vice Mayor was speaking of, and I also know that recently, Mr. Hines met with some people in the community that are, have a project they're trying to, they're trying to get going, and, and I got a report back on that, that they had an initial meeting, and it seems like there's some, there's some positive energy there, and I'm looking forward to hopefully, you know, seeing things like that. Those are projects that I think could fall squarely into proactive partnerships or flexibility for opportunities, I like to see that. A couple of the things, just kind of touching on some subjects, I was very happy to see, you know, Mr., I totally agree with what Rich said. You know, this is a living document, as it's always stated, and to bring this back to us so that we can look at it and see what the progress has been made, so that not only we, but obviously the public can see what we've done, but also for us to look at it and, and again, a living document means that it, it organically, you know, these are the goals we've set, but things kind of do, you know, fluctuate within this, this sphere of these things from time to time, and I, and I like the fact that we revisit them. Clearly, on the staff, on the education, training, building the bench, all that, there's been extensive work done, and I'm happy to see that because that is one of our, our plans. But with that being said, I also, you know, I know there's no certain priority to any of these, and like, you know, there's not like one, two, three, four, they just all exist. I, I do really want to see, you know, want to reiterate the importance of some of the other things, like for example, the traffic mitigation. You know, traffic is probably one of the top two things I hear the most from people. And I'll be honest with you, the reason we probably don't hear more of it at council meetings is because, you know, people like myself and other council members are heavily engaging the community on social media, answering their questions and telling them, you know, that we're doing this, and we're doing that, and this and that, and answering why we don't have additional motor officers at schools, and, you know, and explaining, you know, the situations that a lot of, there's a lot of information they don't know. So we're out there in the front lines, you know, fighting on this, but this is a priority, and I feel like I would like to see, I would like to see more done on, on that front because it's what I call a small-town problem. It's not, you know, it's not, you know, it's not drive-by shootings, it's not serious things that other cities might be experiencing, but it is, it is a big, important thing to the community of Galt, and people talk about it a lot. And, and I witness it on a daily basis, and so I just really want to, I just, the way I read this, it kind of was like, you know, we did that, we don't need any more action on that. It kind of seemed a little dismissive, like, you know, like we're kind of done with that, check that off, check that off, but I don't, I don't think that we're anywhere near being done on what can be done on that, on that traffic mitigation, so I want to keep that in the spotlight. As Mr. Sandu, at our safety meeting, it was, you know, talked about it great length again, it always is. And then the last thing is on, you know, the, I, I appreciate the, you know, I know we're working on some ideas for the fiscal sustainability for the market, which kind of falls into the other item under here, which is the identified secure sustainable funding for parks, so that's kind of, kind of redundant of that. But the last thing is, is the, I'm looking for it, so bear with me a sec here. That might have been it, but anyways, I do appreciate everything that's been done so far and all the progress that has been made. It's good to see all these, but I also want to, you know, make sure we keep moving the goalposts forward on these other ones that, that are just as important, because like Councilman Vandenberg said, it's great to see that we're doing things behind closed doors. I mean, the city, the citizens can see all the work that's being done that they don't opt, they don't visually see, but as I said at the last meeting, people are visual, and they're like, great, we're doing that, great, we're doing that, but how come my grass isn't getting mowed on my landscaping, and how come, you know, this isn't being done over here? And people are visual, and I think we need to remember that we all work for them, and they're, they're the, ultimately, they're, I represent them, we, all five of us represent them, and by proxy, the staff represent them. So that's all I had to say on the, on the strategic plan stuff, so thank you. Does anybody else have anything before we wrap this particular item up?
I just have one, one last question, just a general reminder. How many businesses are in the city of Galt? 127, 30?
About 200.
200, that many? Okay. Thank you.
I usually have Amy around to give me that information.
All right, so no further comment, public comment on this item, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. All right, well, with that, so we were just receiving an update, so we don't need to take any action. So we will be moving on to our next item, which is going to be item L3 from the Police Department. The subject is AB 481 Military Equipment Use Ordinance and Policy for the Police Department. Looks like our report's going to be given by our Lieutenant Small, actually.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yes, Lieutenant Kalanowski, or I'm sorry, no, Chief Kalanowski, I got to get used to that, is out of town on some work-related business, so he's asked me to stand in for him this evening, so it's an honor to do that before you tonight. On September 30th, 2021, Governor Gavin Newsom signed a series of policing reform legislation into law. These laws are aimed at increasing police transparency, and AB 481 in particular requires law enforcement agencies to now adopt military equipment use policies prior to taking certain actions relating to the funding acquisition or use of military equipment as defined by law. The policy must be adopted by ordinance at a regular meeting of the governing body for that agency, which is why we're here tonight. The law now classifies and deems certain police equipment as military equipment under AB 481, and is designed to provide greater transparency to the public. It's important, though, it does not establish or give local agencies any new or greater rights to this, to the use of this equipment. It clearly just, it's more of a transparency-type action so that the public and the council knows what equipment's available to us that's defined as military equipment under this bill. AB 481 requires adoption of this policy before the law enforcement agency can take action to request military equipment as defined by the statute. Or proposal for, I'm sorry, proposal for entering into an agreement with any person or entity to seek funds for, apply for, acquire, use, or collaborate in using military equipment, or acquiring military equipment through any other means not specifically detailed in the statute. This introduction and first reading is a first step in the approval by city council. This item will be heard for final adoption on May 17th, 2022, at the regularly scheduled council meeting. Once approved, city council will be asked on a recurring basis to hear and approve an annual review of this ordinance, as well as approve any annual military equipment report that discusses whether equipment has been compliant with provisions of AB 481. Each annual military equipment report must be made publicly available on the Police Department's website, which we're planning for right now, for as long as the equipment is covered by the report, is, by the, as long as the equipment provided in the report is in use. The report will be first presented to the Public Safety Committee, consistent with the draft language in section 710.9 of the law. And so this evening, we're recommending, we're asking the council to introduce in way of the first reading by title only of a proposed ordinance adopting the military equipment use policy pursuant to AB 481 for the Galt Police Department. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, if you do want to make a public comment on this, you're welcome to star nine on the phone or speaker sheet. Does the council have questions for Lieutenant Small?
Just, Mr. Small, just very quick. As you know, there's AB 487, this is signed by the governor, right? And I believe they're going to identify the military equipment, is city have it or, or they use it, right? And city of Galt, we do have, we're using that equipment, can you might be describe which equipment, or is not?
Yeah, it's, it's in the, it's attached to the report. Some of our rifles qualify under military equipment, some of our breaching tools for gaining access to locked buildings qualifies. We've also included all of the equipment listed under Elk Grove Police Department's policy because we have a joint SWAT team with them. So in a SWAT-type situation, their, their SWAT team and with our, our members on that team would come down here and operate, and so we've included all the equipment for them as well in anticipation that those types of events will happen in the future, and that will be under this legal, we've complied with the law in regard to the use of anything that Elk Grove uses.
Thank you.
If I may, so if I understand you correctly, we will, the city of Galt Police Department will have things on public record that they may not actually have possession of, but because it's a joint use, such as the SWAT that you mentioned, that's required.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so anything we can anticipate reasonably to be used in the city, we, we, we have to kind of comply with and provide information on that. Because we have that joint Elk Grove MOU for the SWAT team, it's reasonable that we would expect that. But that equipment would not necessarily be housed at the Galt Police Department.
Right, which, which also helps reduce cost.
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I just have a, more comments rather than questions. Yeah, I took some time and read through the process that this bill went through, AB 481, and one thing that I learned is that this is not equipment that is obtained by the military. It's, it's equipment that's military in nature as defined by the state legislature. So I, I think that's important to, to point out because oftentimes, governing bodies don't, don't identify, they wouldn't identify necessarily things that, that are military that the general public would think are not, right? And so, so that's one piece. The other is, is there's no reimbursement from the state for putting this policy together or the time and energy that it takes to do an annual report. And so I don't necessarily agree, and I just want to get that on record, that I don't necessarily agree with this, this piece of legislation. In fact, the author is no longer in office, and here we are implementing something that, that is interesting. The, the interesting piece to me is going to be how this is going to affect officer safety by publicly disclosing items in which our officers are faced with critical incidents. And, and this is just a scenario, right? It's not every piece of equipment, but I really can anticipate, anticipate some people, bad people may not know what a flashbang is. And here we are now educating the, the general public, which is okay, but the ones that are out there to do bad stuff are going to get an education on tactical equipment that's being used. I don't necessarily agree that it's for transparency. I think it's for reduction of police control for the, by the, by the chiefs. So I just have to say that. I certainly am going to support staff's recommendation on this because we, we need all the tools we need, we can get for our officers, but I don't necessarily agree with the state's intent and, and/or how this was developed, so. And I'll say that, you know, Galt's a different place, and so, but I, I am looking forward to the mandatory public meeting that we're going to have at some point here in the near future about, that the law requires us to. Did I mention there was no reimbursement from the state? So I appreciate the energy and time that the chief has put in and everyone in the department's put into this, and I will support it today, but I do have some significant concerns with the legislation, so, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to echo everything he said. I too struggled with why, I was like, I just struggle with why we would want to, I mean, we're not talking about tanks, and, I mean, that's one of the things, but that's not, no, Galt's not rolling around with tanks and, and. with tanks, and, and clearly, it's, it's policymakers deeming something as military just because, you know, just because Galt PD has a five-five-six rifle, and the military uses a same caliber rifle now. Obviously, that weapon, that, you know, is considered military, which is, it's just, it's the same thing, I guess you could call when you start calling things assault weapons, and it's, you know, it's a loose term, it's a loose adjective. But yeah, to have a list of things, like to say, oh, Galt PD has this many rifles, and this many this, and this many that, has this. I mean, I don't understand the purpose of, I mean, somebody say transparency, but it's like, it almost would be like, where do we stop? Do we, at some point, for transparency, start saying, well, this is where we're gonna have our police deployed in the morning, they're gonna have two officers over here on this street, and then over here, we have to keep a running schedule where our officers are gonna be at any given time. I mean, it kind of works towards the criminals instead of the citizens, in my opinion. So, yeah, again, I support it because we have to, but I just think this is more government overreach. I think it's virtue signaling, in my opinion. And so that's what I have to say about it. Does anybody else have anything to say?
You guys are both right. This was born out of the defund movement, and so the purpose is not transparency, the purpose is to take it away, and they failed at, you know, being able to do that. Some of those people might think twice, given what happened Sunday morning, four blocks from their offices. But yeah, no, you're right, that, that is the, that is the purpose. And, you know, and not only can people go on and say, well, this is what they have, but hey, this is what they don't have. They can compare agencies and see who has less stuff, and maybe that's a good place to target. So, yeah. It's useless, but I support going forward with the flexible language to keep us in compliance.
Alright, any other comment by council? Public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Alright, well then I'll be looking for a motion, excuse me, a motion to introduce and waive first reading by title only of a proposed ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy pursuant to AB four eighty-one for the Galt Police Department. So I move. Moved by Councilman Vandenberg, and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved five to zero. Second item up, from also from our police department, we're on item L four, for those following along at home, is going to be the unmanned aerial system UAS proposal. Mr. Small?
Well, speaking of AB four eighty-one. Yeah, okay. So the police department has identified the need to purchase and deploy unmanned aerial systems in order to provide more effective enforcement of the law, decrease risk to officers, and utilize technology to offset the impacts of having a limited, having a limited number of officers deployed in the field. UAS programs have become commonplace in law enforcement throughout California, including the Sacramento region, and offer a substantial improvement in our ability to effectively enforce the law and improve public safety. The UAS can be used to assist in the apprehension of subjects who may be attempting to evade law enforcement, assist in locating missing persons, and provide improved security at special events. It can also be used to assist in locating evidence, processing crime scenes, and during vehicle collision investigations, the last of which I've had an opportunity to talk to my counterparts, and in significant vehicle collision investigations, they're cutting the time to a quarter of what it takes before, and providing much more accurate measurements. So, in that respect, and in the other respects I mentioned, this tool's incredibly valuable. To give you a little bit more about its use and some of the specifics, though, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Detective Young Hammack. As part of our leadership development program, he identified this as a need for the police department, and he's basically seen this project through from the beginning till where we are today. So I want to recognize his efforts for that, and then allow him to provide some additional information about the program. And once he's done, I'll come back, provide a little bit more information, and then we'll answer any questions you have, so.
Thank you for that. Good evening, everybody. So he kind of gave a brief rundown, so I'll try to be brief on that and not hit on the same things that he did. You can go to the next slide. So like he mentioned, I did some, some research, I talked to other agencies, and kind of identified that this was pretty important, it's pretty relevant. Most agencies around here are using them, and they're, they're very successful. They're not intrusive, and they're very helpful for, for public safety. So, a little bit about me, how I got this thing started, you can go to the next slide. I've been with the department almost eight years now, so three, almost three years actually now as a detective. So I have a little bit of experience behind my belt. I've got some experience with rail-controlled vehicles and stuff, so I, I know how these things work. I actually own a drone, so prior to actually implementing this, I am very familiar with them. So, once we do launch this program, I'll be the point person to facilitate any training or anything like that. So, I found a course down in Huntington Beach, actually, that did a post-certified drone pilot training. So it actually covered all of the, the policies that need to be put in place, some of the, some of the things that we need to look for, some transparency-type things that we need to look at for public. There's other, there's a lot of options I'll kind of cover briefly later on in the slides. So I'm an FAA certified drone pilot, so I actually took my FAA license, so I do have that. That allows me to fly commercially, so it doesn't get us in any kind of legal trouble. And I can fly an aircraft under fifty-five pounds. The ones that we're looking at are only like two to three pounds, depending on some of the equipment that you can add to them. So, the, there's drones out there that are much heavier and much bigger, that kind of pros, propose a little bit of a, a safety issue depending on where you're flying it. These don't really have that, and some of them, you can even fly indoors when we talk about some of the mini ones. So you can go to the next slide. Lieutenant Small mentioned a couple of the things that we have for public safety, life preservation missions. These are some of the operations that we would use it for. The biggest, you know, one of the biggest things is officer safety. So, you know, a lot of times we have to call for air support if something happens. We, we have two officers and a sergeant on at night, and sometimes we can't even get air support. So if something really big happens, we're kind of, our hands are tied, and we could barely set a perimeter. So something like this, we could deploy within minutes. We could have life feed up, we could have thermal imaging up, and really help not walk into a bad situation. So, that was kind of the driving force of this, and then there's a bunch of other things that kind of go along with it that, that help us out to be more effective. And, you know, some of those are investigative scenes. I know that the accident reconstruction's huge. There's some 3D modeling software out there that's very comprehensive and very detailed, and I'll cover that in a minute. So some of the other stuff, the, the search and rescue-type stuff, if we have a missing person, like I said, with thermal imaging, if it's at night, we could get on it right away versus having to kind of wait for some daylight hours, or, you know, get caps to come out to help us and do things like that. So it really like reduces the amount of time that it takes us to locate people. Some of the other things we could use, special events, you know, some of the parades and stuff that we have, you know, we could even livestream some stuff if we use the right software. So we can do some, some stuff to integrate the public with it, and, and kind of show some of the cool things that it can do. And then mutual aid-type stuff, too. You know, if we have an agency that asks for us, it's close by, and they don't have a drone available for some reason, and we have one available, we could, we could go help them out. And I'm sure they would do the same for us if we were in that situation. So, you can go to the next slide. Like I said, there's gonna be some policy stuff, so some of the things that have to be in the policy, or, you know, the UASs will not be weaponized in any form, and they won't be used for any type of random surveillance activities. We're not gonna just fly them over people's houses. That's not gonna be allowed to do, it's gotta be mission-based. And, you know, this is some of the language has to be in the, in the policy, too, about targeting people based on individual characteristics, whether it be race, ethnicity, the religion, or anything like that. So, that language has to be in there, and then, you know, we can't conduct any business other than official business. So we're not gonna be using them for anything personal. Use your personal drone for that, not the city drone. You can do the next slide. So some of these are some of the options that we have. We're looking at the DJI Mavic two Enterprise. It's about seven thousand dollars, which includes three batteries and a controller and everything. So that one's kind of a medium-sized drone, like I was talking about, about two, two and a half pounds. So, it's got a very high-quality picture camera on it, forty-eight megapixels, got a thirty-two, thirty-two X zoom on it. And this one actually has the FLIR camera, or the thermal imaging camera with a sixteen X zoom. So, the, the thermal imaging picture that you get even in the nighttime is, is very high quality for a drone this size. One of the things mentioned here was Axon, Axon Air offers these particular drones through their software. What that does is kind of sync with our camera systems, and you can livestream with it, download it to evidence.com, all, all the data for it. So, that kind of gives a little bit of capability. I'll talk a little bit more about that because there's some costs involved with it. I think they're, they're like nine hundred dollars a year per pilot, per year. So, we'll weigh the cost of that, but that's an option. Another one is the DJI Mavic Mini two. So, some of the larger agencies are using these for interior flights. So if we're gonna do some type of warrant service, or if we're looking for somebody that's active, maybe dangerous, we can actually fly these indoors. They'll have propeller guards on them, so you can beat them off a wall if you need to. And they're super small, they're like the size of your hand. And then you can just watch your screen and fly it through and clear the whole house without even entering beforehand. So, they're very good use for that, and, and my recommendation would get, you know, to be, to get a couple of those. So, you can go to the next, next Another one of the options we looked at was the Autel. This one's like really an upcoming drone. They're a little bit more money, they're about nine thousand, but they don't have some limitations that DJI has. So DJI has, as you know, is made in China, so they have some, some firmware updates that can, can come out continually, and then there's some, some geographical locking that happens depending on if you're in airspace or not, where you have to get some type of clearance basically through DJI before you can fly the thing. You won't even turn the propellers on. So, a lot of agencies are going with this Autel because it doesn't have those limitations. So, it's something to look at, there's a little bit more money, and, and the quality is, is pretty equal, maybe a little bit more runtime in it, and the thermal imaging on it actually is a little better. I got to play with it down in Huntington Beach, so it's a pretty awesome setup. And I just put in there some of the other options that are out there just to show the cost difference. Skydio makes a drone, it's, it's got really good autonomy, so you know, you can, it's easy to fly basically, but the camera's not good, and the reception's not good, and it's about double the cost of everything. So, not, not at the top of my list, but it's one of them that's out there that people are using. You can go to the next slide. And then this, this would be like on the higher end, the DJI Matrice. This is some, some of the bigger agencies are actually clearing calls with this and flying them right out of dis, you know, from dispatch. They'll just, they'll get a call, they'll dispatch the call, the drone will fly out and go straight to the call and, and hover until cops get there, or even clear the call if they don't need any cops there. But these things are probably twenty-five thousand plus, but you can carry payload with them. I think Amazon is actually, might use some of these for, for small packages. So, but this is another popular drone for law enforcement that, that's out there. So I just wanted to show you guys so you can kind of see some of the options that are available to us if we ever need something like that. You can go to the next slide. Some of the cool things about the DJI, and, and the Autel has them too, are some of the attachments. You can put a spotlight on it where you get like two thousand or three thousand lumens of light. There's a speaker on them, so you can make announcements from the drone. And then, you know, they have like a beacon on it if you have to fly in certain conditions where you have to, it's actually become an FAA requirement where they're all gonna need it eventually, but you'll need a blinking light, so it's, it's kind of like identify as an aircraft in the air. So some of those are pretty cool, and even Autel has like other attachments where you can put like a cage on it, and you can do all kinds of, more lights and, and all kinds of things. So, even grappling hooks, grappling hooks is another one. We, we actually pulled a gun off a roof using a drone, so it was kind of fun. So, you can go to the next slide. All these come with a remote. The DJI's a little smaller, five and a half inch screen, but it's built in, so we don't need a tablet, we don't need a phone. Everything's built in the remote, and this, this comes in the package in the prices that I mentioned, this is, this comes with it. So, the Autel one has a bigger seven-inch screen, almost eight-inch screen, and they're very high quality. So there's no need to buy phones or tablets or have to deal with those in any of these packages I put together, except for the Mavic Mini two, but we could use one of our department-owned cellphones for that, if we need to. You can go to the next slide. Some of the things that, you know, I never really thought about until I went to the class, was a, you know, having like an aviation communication radio, so you can hear if there's incoming flights in the area, so you can limit your, your altitude if, if you are in flight somewhere where you think an airplane might be coming in. Or if we have air support, say we get a helicopter from SSD or CHP that comes in, we could listen to their air traffic and then, you know, communicate with them so we don't get in their space. So, it's like two hundred and fifty bucks for one of the cheaper Ya-Zoo's, which is what most people use. So that's as a consideration to have something like that. Here I mentioned the, the claws and the hooks, just the cheap things on Amazon actually work really well, so some options. Anti-collision lights, FAA is requiring all of those, so that's kind of like the blinking light on it. I'm sure drones in the future will have them built in, but right now you can just pretty much put a battery-powered one on there and take off, so. Another thing, one of the details is remote ID. They call it a license plate of the sky, basically. So what it does is it transmits identifiers to let air traffic control know that, hey, this drone's in the air right now, and this is its location. So, right now you could buy a separate add-on. Going forward, all drones will have to have it, and that's required by FAA. So I'm hoping by the time we order these, it may have it integrated, so we don't have to buy any extra equipment. And then another FAA requirement is propeller guards. You can't fly these things, you know, commercially over people and stuff, and at night, without propeller guards. So, it's a safety thing, if you get into some situation and unfortunately hit somebody with it. At least they'll have prop guards on it and won't cut them up or anything like that. You can go to the next slide. So this is the data management stuff. I talked about the Axon Air and the cost, so that's out there. Motorola makes some Cape software that's out there, Airdata makes some software. All this stuff, what it does is it allows live streaming. Airdata's pretty cool because it actually downloads everything off the drone and logs it. So everything from your battery usage to your flight inputs, it literally shows like what inputs you put in your controller. And some agencies are even posting this stuff publicly on their websites and stuff, so it's very transparent. Even the map, it'll, like Airdata will do a flight map, so if you put it up and you do a perimeter with it and land it, it'll show that path. And so some agencies are doing that just to show the transparency, just depending on the city that are in there, maybe it'd be more sensitive to, than other cities. They, they do do that. So that, that capability's there, and there's a small cost with it. Airdata's like twenty dollars a month, which isn't much, and I think they're based out of El Dorado County. The Motorola Cape software, that one's expensive, I think that was like four or five thousand dollars. And then, like I said, the Axon Air is a per-year, nine hundred dollar per year type of reoccurring cost, so, things to consider. Next slide. This is the 3D mapping stuff I talked about. That picture's actually a, a model, a 3D model, I think, from Pix4D. So what the drone does, it goes up in the air, it talks with the software, you say I want it to, to scan this area, and the drone does it all automatically. It takes pictures and videos and pieces all together, builds this 3D model. So like Lieutenant Small mentioned with the accident reconstruction, we could completely reconstruct that scene, even a whole street with, with a drone, and it would build a full 3D model of it. And then you could go in and manipulate it, put in measurements, vehicles, placements, everything. So, not only cutting time down in half, it's extremely accurate, and, and there's no guesswork. It's very factual data that it puts out. Pix4D is about five thousand dollars for a one-time purchase. SkyBrowz, I think they, you can do it ninety-nine dollars a month, or you could do it for four thousand dollar one-time purchase. So, some of those things are things to consider. SkyBrowz is kind of cool because you could actually do it out in the field. If we were gonna go out on perimeter or something like that, we had a, a subject that was locked down in the backyard, we could actually throw it up, say, hey, map this real quick, and it'll map the entire yard, house, everything. And you can even say, you know, this is how far this person is away from me, this is how high they are. So you can really lock down somebody based on that. So, and that can be done within minutes with that SkyBrowz software. So it's, it's pretty cool stuff. Next slide. So to operate one of these, you gotta have a licensed pilot like myself. So, you know, somebody would have to go to, to the airport and take the FAA test and, and get certified to fly one of these. The visual observer, that's usually you have a second person with you to kind of keep eyes on the drone, so you're line of sight. It's not a requirement, but it's recommended, just depending on your staffing that day. The good thing is, if you have a visual observer, my license works with that person. So as long as I'm standing next to the person flying the drone, they're, they're operating under my license, basically. So there, there's some flexibility there for who can fly it, as long as a certified pilot is there on scene. So, I mentioned the COAs in this, but they're kind of actually going away. We don't have controlled airspace in Galt, luckily, so we don't have to worry about any type of approvals from air traffic control or anything. So I have a map, an app on my phone that I could pull up and check, and I mean, I think Lodi might be the closest one with the skydiving place. Other than that, it's up in Sacramento, so we're pretty clear here. FAA waivers went away, too. We don't have to apply for any waivers, as long as we have the propeller guards and, and all the proper equipment. We could fly at night without any restrictions. We used to have to apply for a waiver for nighttime flight, but that went away. So, and that's the, the weight restriction and the prop guards. So, next slide. So the training and upkeep, obviously I've put together a training program for continual training. It's recommended to at least fly like a battery a day. It's recommended to at least fly like a battery a day if you can, or at least every week, just to keep the battery charge discharge going, and it gives the pilot the opportunity to stay familiar with the drone, so. We'll do some formal interviews for this because we'll have, you know, I don't know if it's going to be four or five pilots, hopefully, so we have some versatility there, but not just anybody's going to be allowed to do a program. Somebody has to show proficiency of some sort, we can't just have anybody flying, so we're going to be aware of that. And then we'll probably get some visual observers, some of the ones that maybe aren't ready for flight, yeah, can do a visual observer for, they can at least get familiar with them. And I think the more people that get involved, the better. It's kind of like a canine, if you don't work with a canine, you don't know what to do around it. Same thing with the drones, you don't work around them, you don't know exactly what to expect, so hopefully we can get some good integration into this and implement this, so. The maintenance on them's pretty small, you just basically check the propellers, make sure there's no cracks or nicks or whatever. If there are any, there's no sanding or fixing or whatever, you just toss them and get new ones, it's not worth the risk of having a prop come apart, so. That's one thing to consider, and then the batteries, they do last a while, but then, you know, there will be a replacement time period, depending on how often they're used, the heat that they're stored in, things like that, so we'll have to take that into consideration. Otherwise, the software firmware updates and just functionality checks, so. We'll log all this stuff, there'll be a log of all the maintenance that's done on it and all the checks, so we can keep track of it, so if there's ever any questions, if something were to happen, if a drone were to come down and cause damage or something, we would have a good tracking of everything that we do. And I think that is it. Anybody have any questions for me?
So much cool stuff, so many questions, but I won't go into that. Thank you for the presentation. I think, just trying to think of what questions the public would have, outside of all the cool things that it does is, what, well, I think you covered some of them, but I think I initially had jotted down, what is it not going to do? And you mentioned this is, we're not just going to deploy this thing to fly around to look for like, you know, code enforcement issue in somebody's backyard or whatever, this is mission-based only when these are deployed, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah. And, you know, if it was a situation where we needed a warrant, we could get a warrant if we needed to get into some space where we think it might be a privacy issue, right? But yeah, it's not, we're not going to take this thing up and fly it over our neighborhood and go, oh, that might be a weed grow, and then go.
So I mean, people's civil liberties still apply. You're not going to fly one of the Mavic Minis into somebody's house unless you have like a search warrant to enter the house.
That would be an exigent circumstance where we're actually actively looking for that person for a major crime, or if we have a search warrant and/or, you know, arrest warrant going in.
The other question I have is how often these things get damaged in line of duty, but I think, you know, regardless of how often it is, if you've got a $600 mini drone flying in the house to look for a suspect, and he comes out and whacks it with a baseball bat, I mean, better that than an officer taking injury, and then that could just be, you know, could be a long-term thing, and who knows? So it has so many advantages. But insurance-wise, I mean, obviously, we probably, the department would have some sort of insurance should something happen to one of the drones, if, you know, incident with the drone, and then, I mean, just normal insurance-type procedures would apply, I would assume. And this is just a new realm, so I'm just trying to think outside the box here.
And I know I talked to Lieutenant Small about that, I don't know if you have any details on it, but there is an insurance that covers it, correct?
Yeah. So there are two different insurance questions, you know, liability insurance, so if we're flying it, it drops and somebody gets hurt, obviously, we've priced out that insurance that's included in the fiscal impact that I'll, you know, sharing just a few. But then, was that the insurance you're referencing, or are you, or, I mean?
Yeah, just.
And then replacement costs and whatnot, you know, if there's insurance available for, you know, if one goes down, needs to be replaced, the cost of that from what we've seen so far is pretty high. It's something we'll look into, but, you know, the reliability of the vehicles coupled with the training that we're going to provide the officers, I'm optimistic that, you know, we're not going to have issues of major catastrophic needs for replacements. But if they do come up, we'll have some contingency in place, whether it's insurance or some other funding in place. Part of the fiscal analysis we did includes replacement costs every four years. I don't anticipate that we'd need to, the lifespan of these products are longer than that, but that builds in some cushion, again, just in case we do have one go down, there's some monies available for repair or replacement.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I have a friend who has a Mavic Mini, and I've been around it a few times, it's phenomenal, the stuff, so to think about the scenarios that could be used for that, especially the 3D modeling, I really didn't have ever thought about that, but if you could recreate a crime scene, and then, you know, instead of having maybe like three or four people out there measuring with the little wheels and all these things, you could have it mapped and you could go back to the department and build it and input, you know, trajectories of a bullet, or whatever, I mean, I guess the possibilities are endless to recreate an incident, I mean, I can only imagine how useful. So to be clear, this funding you're at, the direction you're looking for tonight is for the council to provide direction to bring back some sort of budget number, and this funding will be coming from Measure R, which is our half-cent sales tax public safety fund?
Yes, Mayor, because this is a new program that improves the operability of the police department, Measure R would be used to fund this project. We're looking at an appropriation of approximately $30,000, and this amount includes the purchase of the equipment, which would be two of the mid-size drones, the six to eight thousand dollar drones, two of the Minis, the required insurance software and training for one additional pilot. And so that would set us up in that two-year cycle. And then if we were to add additional pilots, sustaining the program at two pilots is approximately $10,000 a year. Half of that, though, is the built-in replacement cost, so it's not that expensive of a program to run, but because of the cost of the equipment, you know, we want to have that replacement in place, we're trying to earmark out those dollars. So again, like you mentioned, if there is a catastrophic incident, one goes down, there's the ability to replace it. And then ongoing annual cost of approximately $4,300 per pilot, that's primarily because we have to insure each pilot, not just each aircraft, and training, in-service trainings, any other potential costs, the cost, as we add more pilots, there's more video recordings, which means potentially more need for data storage and those types of things, even though whether we use the Axon product or not, we'd still use evidence.com, which is the Axon database for storage of all the video for this, so. There might be some cost incurred there, but it wouldn't be substantial.
Okay. I just wanted, you know, to say to the public, this is another good example of Measure R, should this be pushed forward? You know, how good Measure R, that half cent, which is such a low impact on the community, makes such a huge difference. We fund, you know, officers, dispatchers, SROs, graffiti abatement, all these things that people don't even realize that come out of that. The body cameras you guys are wearing now came, partially came out of that, I think. This would be another example, and just so now, you mentioned 40, 30,000 is the?
30,000, yes, sir.
And so I think this last, from our budget, Measure R brought in like 2.3 million this last time around, usually brings like 2 million, but it was over, yeah. So it's a good amount of money that the people voted to be used for public safety. So, I mean, that's what it was earmarked for, and that's what we need to be spending it on, and that's all questions I have, so does anybody else?
I have a couple. I was just curious if you'd consider, you know, crop dusting, considering we're a farming community, if and when that can cause any problems, because it's been a few years, but my understanding is crop dusters actually don't have to submit a flight plan either because they stay below altitude, correct?
Yeah, we kind of cover that stuff, and that's a lot of the line of sight, so technically FAA requirements is three miles line of sight for the distance you can fly a drone. So, you know, you should be able to see an aircraft coming at that level, you know, if you hear a prop airplane or whatever and you're flying, you should be able to look and see it and be able to lower your altitude. Obviously, they have precedence over you, no matter what you're doing, so you need to get out of their way, whether that means land it or go up higher or whatever, but yeah, there's really no, unless you have some type of direct, there's no communication because there's not going to be any air traffic, so you got to be aware of what's going on.
Okay, and then, I think you just actually touched on it, I was curious, the streaming video would be integrated into the existing system and secured, like it's not going to be hackable or anything like that, right?
That depends on if we choose to do that, so, you know, it'd be a direct connection to the drone, obviously, to the controller that you're flying in, and that's secured, so you can't really hack into that. If you use Axon, that's secure, just like our body cams are, but there are options out there to publicly livestream if you wanted to, and those are some of the software programs I talked about, but. So those options are there, but generally, your normal flight, yes, it's secure and you don't have to worry about getting hacked.
Okay, and is there any, it's kind of a personal curiosity, because I'm an electrician, you know, the old Dewalt batteries, they die slowly, the new Lithiums, they just drop dead on your batteries, they just stop working. Is there like a low battery return function on it?
Yeah, there is, so what it does is it actually will check to see how far it is, the drone is away from your remote, and when the battery percentage drops low enough, it'll detect how long it needs to get back, and so if it gets to 20% and it says, hey, I need to fly a half mile back to you, it'll calculate that and actually, it'll tell you like, hey, low battery, it'll beep, and then the thing will just come home automatically and land with battery left, a little bit of battery left.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Not really questions, comments, I appreciate the presentation, and this, like many things, is starting to become somewhat of an industry standard, and I'm kind of amazed hearing almost daily, there's not really a tactical situation that lasts more than a couple, five minutes, that there's not an application for it, so. I certainly appreciate it, and obviously, I'm inclined to support it. And you're talking about two pilots, that's a good starting point, but, you know, I would suggest, once it's up and running, get to the point where we're always going to have somebody on shift that can do it, so, thank you.
Just have a point of clarification, most of my questions were already answered, but in terms of where it could go, is it fair to say that the drone can go wherever an officer is legally able to go at that particular time, whether it's through a warrant or?
That's the idea, correct. It's basically in place of us, so we're not going to put it somewhere where we wouldn't be able to go.
Okay. And then in terms of the live feed, is that, you touched on it, you talked about maybe an extra expense, but are you thinking that that live feed would go into dispatch or to the MDT at some point or something like that?
I just, I mentioned it because the capabilities are there, just like our cameras, I think you're able to pull it up on your phone and livestream them together, and that's with Axon, so that Axon cost would include that, so you could pull up the drone feed as well in the same manner, so. Whether that streams in a dispatch or a cellphone or an MDT, that capability's there.
Well, I appreciate the presentation and the thoroughness, and I suspect you've checked in and consulted with the agencies that are nearby that have programs. I happened to, at one point, had the opportunity to see the Sheriff's Department utilize their drone in our parking lot at work, and it was pretty cool, you know, the little PA announcements off of it, and so it was a good deal. Again, appreciate you putting all the time and energy into this, and whatever you need, I think, at least from my perspective, you know, whatever you need that you believe is reasonable, that you may need in the next, you know, five or 10 years, let's do it now and get you what you need in terms of the accessories and things like that, so that we're not behind the, or you guys aren't behind the eight ball, operate them someday soon, you know, so it's, that would be my druthers, is that we get you what you need now, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hammel, all your time, all your time, give us a good report. Thank you, Mr. Small, there's reporting in detail, I'm going to support that operation. As you know, this is a good thing, safety of the officer, and there is human on the report, a lot of good thing. Just for the clarification, you mentioned you talked to some other agencies, and if you can say which agencies you talked to and how long they have that program?
I think it was, so down, when I was down south, I met some of the southern agencies, so Huntington Beach was there, there was a couple of, I can't remember the exact Bay Area Agency that I was working with, but I also talked with Elk Grove too, because they have some pretty extensive program. But Huntington Beach uses them a lot, I mean, they have their actual air support, but they probably use their drones more than they use actual air support, so.
All right, and there is any agency around our neighboring, Agro, Lodi, Stockton, any of our neighboring city using their program or not that they might be ready?
I think Lodi's using them, I haven't talked to them about it. Stockton, I know, has a program, and San Joaquin County might, I don't think they have it implemented yet, but I'm sure they're looking into it. I know Sat County uses them extensively, Elk Grove has a really good program and a lot of cool equipment, so.
And the other thing on the report, there is some for help to use, and I know this is, I like the program, but we're going to make sure our citizen understand, you know, this program is not somebody's privacy violation, because we understand there's a very fine line between the safety of the officer and the privacy violation. So we want to make sure whatever you mention, we do not cross that line.
And I think that could be covered by attaching it for a call for service, right? So the times that we have it up, there will be a call for service, so we can tie it to it, and then if we decide to do those maps where they record our flight path, we can make those available to public if you wanted to, or we could have them at the department attached to report. So there's options out there to be transparent and make sure that we don't run into those issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is just another tool, you know, that we use in addition to the plethora of other tools that we have, but the rules of engagement still apply regardless of what tool we're using, right? Protections under the Fourth Amendment, unlawful searches and seizures, that all applies to this as it would any other piece of equipment. So all of our policies have to comply with our current search and seizure policies, anything that has to do with this must comply and fall under existing case law regarding the Fourth Amendment and our existing policies. So it will not be used in a violation in that manner, in the same way that we train our officers not to violate the Fourth Amendment, using their vehicles, using their bodies, anything else, so. And that's obviously usually the number one concern in talking to people who have implemented these programs, and that's always a community's concern, right? All of a sudden, I've got this little mini aircraft filming above my house or above my business, and obviously, that is a concern, but there are safeguards in place that would prevent, you know, the violation of anybody's civil rights using this equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Small, thank you for explanation to the public. Thank you, that's all.
What is, just one, I'll ask a quick question, so what timeline are we looking at here? So if you were given direction tonight, or if we give direction to our city manager to allow you to come back, what kind of, how long are we looking for you to come back with a number that we can approve, or is that part of tonight, and then how long will it take to purchase? So I'm looking for like, from tonight to deployment, how long are we looking at?
Luckily, Detective Hammel's done all the work upfront, so I think we've pretty much narrowed down the product that we want to use, that we think's best. And so really what we're looking for from the council tonight is direction back to staff to include the cost that we've highlighted into the budget build for the next budget, and once that's appropriated, then we can make the purchases right there. I don't know for sure if the companies that we'd be purchasing from have any delays due to supply chain issues or whatnot, so that might impact our ability. But in terms of readiness, it's, we have a policy ready to go, we've identified the product, it would just be getting the product. Detective Hammel can already fly, so really, from receiving the product and adopting the policy, he could start flying day one unless I'm missing something, so then he'd just be getting other pilots trained at that point.
So piggyback on what Councilman Lozano said earlier, where he was kind of implying on making sure that, you know, you get what you guys think you need. The number that you're asking for, you think is sufficient to get all the things that you're looking to need, I'm sure there's some other stuff you'd like to have, but I just want to make sure if we give you direction, that you have the money that's necessary, or you're coming, you're not coming at us with like the bottom of the barrel number, you're confident with the number that you're?
For the equipment, for the two drones, we think that's sufficient for now, because we want to build out the program thoughtfully, there's no sense in having equipment that we can't use based on the number of people trained. So I think we're comfortable with the two larger drones and the two smaller drones initially for equipment. Our, I guess if we were to, if the council's suggesting that we, that there might be ways for us to build the program out better right now, my suggestion would be to maybe add additional pilots, because with the two drones, that's enough to deploy and cover us what we think based on our calls for service pretty well for a while, but again, if we only have one pilot, we just got to hope that that critical incident occurs while that pilot's here, so.
So what would that cost be?
With the training, and then the additional cost for the insurance and the other items listed, I think I scoped out about $4,300 per officer, so an additional, so if we had Detective Hammel, one more built into the 30,000, if we were to, you know, do another do another four more at $4,000, so, you know, $16,000, $17,000 more, and that'd give us six pilots and five patrol shifts. And so schedules change, but that would, that would give us a better deployment model in terms of better coverage with the drones that we have.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Council has the option tonight to direct us to bring back a reso at the next meeting with an appropriation in it. So what I'm going to pitch, subject to Lieutenant Small's direction, is that perhaps we bring back a resolution with an appropriation at the next council meeting for $30,000 to get this going, so they can order the equipment, because the supply chain, we just don't know. And then as far as building out the program, the PD can include the build out in the 24, 22, 24 budget, and so all that becomes implementable as of July 1st. So it's April now, we appropriate, we buy, we order, and it might take 90 days to get it in play. Hopefully not. And then by the time 90 days elapse, they're ready to not only deal with the equipment or use the equipment, but they're also, will have funding, hopefully, depending on how the budget goes. But this is measure R, so it's a little different. So they'll have equipment, and they'll also have funding in the brand-new fiscal year to build out the program and get additional pilots. But you get that, you have that time to order the equipment. That's what I'm worried about. How long's that going to take?
Yeah. How long does it take to train additional pilots? What's the timeframe on that?
Honestly, to get certified to fly it, it's a test that you take at the airport, so you could get certified in a day. The class I took was a 40-hour class of one week. You know, that's, it's ideal, but if we had to, we can get a pilot certified to train right away.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, I agree that we're waiting for equipment, but I was thinking in the interim period where you're waiting for equipment, if they have, if we had earmarked funding, they could use some of that, if we had earmarked, say, additional funding upfront with this initial, with this initial direction to, they could start, you know, could get additional pilots trained and already have them ready to go when the equipment arrived. What I'm suggesting is I would be comfortable with going more than 30, just to have that there, just to save, cut through some time. But I'm game with whatever the council wants to do.
I have a quick question. Is the training post-reimbursable, or is it outside of post?
I don't know for sure. Most training is not post-reimbursable anymore. They've tightened up on that, so I'm assuming probably not. Post-reimbursable courses are usually the ones that are required by law.
Okay. And I'm with everyone else. If, the sooner that we can get it into your hands, I think the better, and I think as soon as you can start the process to include other officers through a formal process that you mentioned, and get them trained, I think the better, so. My suggestion would be similar to what the city manager said, but to bring that back maybe next time, and with an outline of what that would look like, and what you think it would take to get people interviewed and done. I second that. Do we need to vote, or is the consensus good enough?
Sounds like we have a consensus. All right, so I will work with the GALT PD, and we will come back with a proposal and have it on the April 19th agenda.
Okay.
Okay. That work for everybody?
Do we have any public comment on this item? I did not ask for that yet.
No public comment.
Okay.
That work for you, Lieutenant Small?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Officer Hammack. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Detective Hammack, excellent job, sir. Excellent.
All right. Well, finishing out the night here, moving on to item M, communication. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Item N, city clerk's report.
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Item O, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any particular comments, but Community Development Director Craig Hoffman, do you have any comments for the group? And the other directors who are hearing me are on their way in to give their comments.
Tonight, I'd like to brief you on your favorite subject. On Monday, we did get a letter back from HCD identifying that our proposed changes meet their standards, so I'll be looking to bring that back to the council. I know it's turning into a journey, and I know how much this council is committed to providing a wide range of housing opportunities that meet the needs of our community, as well as those in the region. But we'll be bringing that back to the council to get that adopted and meet our certification needs from the state. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next up, Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just briefly wanted to update you on a new community engagement platform that we're going to be integrating into our website. So Granicus is the host of our website, and they have a platform called GovDelivery. And so we'll be phasing out the Constant Contact Connect with GALT newsletter and moving to the new GovDelivery platform, which is actually integrated on our website. We'll be using it for the agenda delivery, but we also can use it for newsletters and announcements from all departments. There's a text messaging capability as well, and so when you go to our website pretty soon, you'll have a pop-up box that comes up, a dialog box, asking you to sign up for City Communications. So PD will be able to use it. Parks, if we have any emergencies, we can text message out with updates to the community. So that'll be within the next few weeks, we'll be transitioning that. And then did want to touch on the business assistance programs. I just briefed Lorenzo really quick. I did meet with the chamber on the 10th of March to kind of talk about programs that we were looking at modeling this through. We met with Rancho Cordova, we met with the city of Citrus Heights, and we also have talked to Elk Grove, and trying to put a program together that models some of those and getting, as Lorenzo mentioned, some of the best practices to make sure that we don't have any issues with the businesses when we do go. One of the hiccups that we've heard and a lot of roadblocks have to do with the application process and documents that are being required, and so we want to make sure that this is something that we can actually qualify businesses for, and we don't have any of the issues with documentation and making sure that businesses are easily able to apply. So we're working on that right now. We also have the nonprofit program that we're trying to bring together on the same evening, so I believe we have that scheduled in May on the 17th. And so I've communicated with the nonprofits, I've talked to quite a few of them who've been asking about funding and when that's going to be coming forward. We'll be pushing that out. We're going to try to get some feedback from them to make sure that the program that we are putting forth is going to be something that is helpful to them. And we're also looking at, with the business assistance program, trying to incorporate home occupation as well, to make sure that we cover that as part of the program. And so in addition to meeting with the different cities, we also have a financial consultant we've been talking to. One of the problems that Rancho Cordova ran into is businesses really being concerned about supplying financial records to the city, because it is public information, and so we have a third-party consultant we've been talking to about reviewing those records so they don't get submitted to us, they go to a third party, and so we're working through that right now. And hopefully, we'll be able to, I've actually finished the program for the business assistance. I'm working on the nonprofit right now. There's guidelines that have to be put in place and application, we've got to update the website, there's a lot that goes into it, so it's taken a little bit of time. But I'm hoping to meet with the chamber within the next couple of weeks to go over the program that we've drafted to make sure that it's effective for them and for the businesses that they represent. So if there's any questions, that's all that I have for this evening.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work on that, and I think our comments by no means didn't want to imply that we didn't think that anything was being done, it's just that we've been getting a lot of pressure from our businesses asking questions over and over, so we're just relaying that on, and so glad to hear that. Thank you.
No, no problem.
Yeah, thank you for being proactive and researching in other cities. It sounds like you found out some really good information to help these businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Steen.
Yes, good evening. I just thought I would advertise that we have several vacancies for lifeguard right now. We're gearing up for summertime already. It's a great opportunity for students or anyone who's home during the summertime. The minimum requirement is to be age 16. We do have information on our website for the Red Cross and CPR certification requirements as well, so if everyone could pass on the news. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Have a few things to report on. The first is our SOAR program, Schools Out Academic and Recreation Program. Next slide, please. So in, in 2012, the school district cut back on busing for their students, and they asked us to bridge that time between when the parents got home and after school, so we created a, our SOAR program, our after-school program. Well, the school recent, the school district recently got a grant to provide their own after-school programs, so they'll be providing them free of cost to their students at our SOAR sites, which means we no longer have a site to operate at or need to. Next. But we will still be keeping our SOAR, Summer SOAR program, which will run during the summer months. So the first full week when school's out, up until the last week, we'll operate that at Fair Side School and utilize the pool of Inventor's field during that. If you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer them now, but I wanted to make sure you understood that this is not a decision the city made, this is a decision that the school district did, you know, and it's a good one. They received grant funding for this program, and now they can staff it.
Is there any, is there any significant fiscal savings?
Not a lot, no. This was one of the few programs that was basically a wash.
Okay.
We did not lose any money on it.
I don't have any questions specifically about this, just wanted to say while you're up there that was very pleased with the market. I didn't get a chance to talk to you after the morning, because I know you had a family event, but it was very well-attended. I think it was an awesome time. Spoke to so many people that day, and even people coming in, you know, to my business after and throughout this week, since Saturday, last couple of days. Real positive feedback, I have heard nothing negative. Just a couple of things, hey, it'd be nice if you had blah blah, but, you know, just positive feedback, but I just want to say thank you. Of course, I've expressed to your staff already, but to Jackie and Ashley and everybody who's behind the scenes, there's so many people, I'm sure, I know that we're very pleased with how it went.
Can you go to the next slide? Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was ahead of you there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I asked for questions, but now the next one, sorry. Yeah, I was going to talk about the Saturday market. It's all right. We're just on the same wavelength, there we go. So this last Saturday, we had our first Saturday market. We had a touch truck event along with that. If you can do the next slide, please. Here's a couple of pictures of some of the merchandise that we had, and the kids climbing on top of what looks like a dangerous picture of them in the back of a cow weigh stump truck, but they were monitored. People were there with their stuff and keeping an eye on the kids. So we believe there was well over 1,000 people that attended. We'll get a better count at the next one. We had over 40 vendors, and we believe that it was a very successful market, and Jackie and her staff did an incredible job running that. And then the next one. We're already planning our next Saturday market, which will, we will be celebrating Cinco de Mayo, and we'll have live music, the Mexican dancing horses, we'll have some dancers there, it's going, and a car show, so we hope to bring back the same amount of crowds, and we got positive feedback from our vendors. Two of our food vendors sold out completely, and several, several of our vendors sold out of product. So we're really happy with what we're doing, and I think that we can make this successful. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you guys had any.
Thank you. I noticed, I spoke to some of the vendors, citizens, staff, people, someone from the police department, and there was a heavy participation in the morning, early hours. I was there from 12 to 1, 1:30, whatever. Did it continue to taper off? And the reason I ask is I'm wondering if, you know, we pay attention, should it shift even more towards the morning hours as it gets hotter? Because, you know, I certainly don't want to walk out at 110-degree day and walk in the sun.
Yes, towards the, towards the 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock hour, it was the slowest time.
Okay, so it's just something, I mean, don't get me wrong, it was better than I expected, to be honest, which is really good to hear, you know, it was a lot of good feedback and stuff, but there's no reason to try not to improve, you know?
No, we're, we're taking notes. We've already had a debrief. There's things we can improve on, and, you know, we will be continuing to improve on the event.
Okay, great. And then, what's your gut feeling? Because you got the vendors, we got a good amount of vendors, don't get me wrong, but we want more, and what's your gut feeling about expanding that? Because as this was brought to the city council, it was brought at a small loss, you know, a negligible loss, which was a reasonable risk. You know, what's the odds of expanding that so that it's a gain?
I'll be able to tell you more in May, to see what kind of momentum we got from the vendors, because what they'll do is, the best advertisement is those vendors talking to their friends, saying, come down to this market, we did really great.
Right, I sold out.
Yeah, so I will tell you probably in June where we, where I think we're, where we can go with this.
Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I agree. I think the vendors, you know, any skeptics are going to be like, wow, and I think that it's going to be the buzz that's created, and that'll just, you know, organically feed into more people wanting to participate. I too had a good friend of ours who's a vendor, and I was helping her pack up at the end of the day, and she was saying she saw like $600 for the product. She said, she doesn't even do that well at the street fair in Lodi, so definitely, really well, to answer Jay's question, it was like about 10, about 10:15, 10:30, really was like, like really packed, I would say, and then about 1:30, it started to taper, as it started to get a little warm, so about noon, dead noon, it was probably, you know, the maximum. So anyways, I've already said everything, there's nothing left to be said, except that it's a great job. Hopefully, we can continue on, and we support, you know, what you've been doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Finance Director Matt Boring.
Good evening. I don't have any updates today. I didn't, I didn't bring a slideshow like Armando.
You didn't, you didn't put on a successful market, so I'm sorry, we didn't, we don't get to, but you look great tonight, your suit looks great.
Thank you.
Your slideshow's usually put us to sleep, so we appreciate that.
I did you a favor then.
Lot of love in the room. Let's go with Lieutenant Rick Small.
Afraid to come up here after that. The only thing I'd like to just remind everyone is that the last week of April is the Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial, and our Officer Harmon Greewall will be enrolled at that site on that date, the following week, the first week of May, will be the State Memorial. And then, I think, a week or two later, the National Memorial, and we're sending out several of our staff to participate in that as well. So if you haven't received something already, you'll receive something from us shortly about those dates and an invitation to attend. And again, it's a, it's an open event, so anybody who wants to attend, show the respect for the two officers, who, local officers, who will be enrolled at that time, our Officer Harmon Greewall, and then Deputy Adam Gibson from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. So everybody's encouraged to attend.
Thanks, Rick. Let's go with Public Works Director Mike Sully.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. A couple of quick updates. The banner program, the Great American Little Town GALT banners, that program is basically sunsetting, and our staff will be taking down the banners probably over the next month or so, you know, as month or so, you know, as kind of filler work in between their normal duties and whatever, you know, more urgent matters may come up. And they'll be returned over to Dan and Tony, and I think, and they'll be distributing them back to the businesses, so they'll get them back. The other thing I wanted to mention is after the State of the City, we joined with Bonnie and a couple others, and Dan, I think, or Tony, actually it was, in going around to look at locations where the herd-on-the-street cows can be located. So we identified several locations for that, so stay tuned, more to come, and I think the buzz is going to be starting, so I don't want to take too much Bonnie's thunder or anything, but anyway, we're working with them to get that program going, so that's it, thank you.
Mike, we still have the military banner program is still in place, though, right?
Correct, yeah, the military program is an ongoing perpetual, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, not yet. We have City Attorney Frank Splendario.
I have nothing further to add of consequence.
Nobody cares about the attorney, look at that.
And of course, City Clerk Tina Hubert.
I have nothing, thank you.
All righty. Mayor, that concludes our comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to comments by City Council members and future agenda items, we'll start with our Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you, all the staff, all the directors, and Mr. Heinz, doing the hard working and give us a good report. I also like to thank you, public comments. I also like to thank you, anybody be here in this chamber, spending that much time to listen to the council. And I have a few more things. I get the opportunity to attend and spoke at the State of the City, and Mr. Heinz gave a good, well-detailed report on the state of our city. I also like to thank you, other staff members, directors, they gave the report on that day. I also like to thank you, Mayor, given his mission, what he's doing and what he already done on the city side. I was very shocked and extremely sad after hearing of passing of Mr. Bill Forrest. I had talked to him very recently before hearing the unfortunate news. I would have never expected that would be our last conversation. He was a very hard-working, dedicated man, and brought a lot of his experience when he joined our city back in 2006. My thoughts and prayers are with his family and loved ones, we will miss him dearly. I also attended Saturday Market this past weekend. I was very happy to see so many people come out, enjoy themselves. There was great food, vendors, music, and weather was so great. I'm glad we were able to do the public outreach and get feedback on what time would work, and that we made some adjustment. Many folks I spoke with at the event were very happy and with the time slot. I was very, it was very successful. Thank you to Mr. Solis and his staff. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Papinow.
Yes, so first off, and most important condolences to Bill's family and his city family. Certainly always appreciated his straightforward, no-nonsense talk to make things even simple enough for me to understand, and the humor that he delivered it with, so it's just tremendously sad. And also condolences to the innocent victims and the families of innocent victims down in Sacramento, and a hats off to the first responders, the police department, CHP, Sheriff's Department, the fire department. It's been a fast-moving investigation, and if you follow the news, there's something new every time you turn around, so, you know, hats off to all of them in dealing with that tragedy. And on a brighter note, yes, the market was awesome, I had a great time out there, my wife enjoyed all of the flowers and stuff that I tried to help the vendors sell out, so congratulations to the staff on a great success, and looking forward to seeing that grow, because it definitely seemed like there was some enthusiasm for vendors to come back and for it to expand. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor Farmer. Yeah, my condolences to the Forrest family. Thank you, Mike, for selling, for coming up and saying a few words about him. I'm sure Bill would have appreciated much of the humor we displayed here this evening. It just always hard when people seem to just get stolen from me, you know? To the public comment, thank you for both, thank you both, all the public comment. I encourage more people to do it, it's one of the easiest ways to speak to everybody involved all at the same time, and it's often an opportunity missed. Congratulations to our local FFA, they did well recently. It seems to be a continuing trend in GALT, it's good to see. And when it comes to the drones, I'd love to have demonstrations for the city council when it arrives. I enjoyed today's meeting, had a good time, actually one of the best times I've had since being elected to city council. Thank you for the opportunity from the citizens to do so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vandenberg. Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just also, I'm just going to repeat a couple of things that have been repeated, but I think they're needed. Condolences to Bill's wife, Diane, and their family. He's certainly going to be a huge loss, and I know the city staff is struggling with it right now, and so my condolences to them as well, and hopefully we'll be able to get through this as a team, and so I appreciate the information being passed on to us as soon as I was able to, so thank you for that. Also, to the innocent victims down in Sacramento over the weekend and their families, it's absolute tragedy, and certainly something we don't ever want to have happen, but certainly not this close to home as well, so. And then on more of a lighter note, I was unable to attend the market, I was on a pre-planned vacation in the Midwest, but I want to say, like Kevin's wife, my wife was down there helping the vendors sell out as well. And I, we have this thing on our phones, and I can tell when our accounts during weird hours, not weird hours, but unusual hours for us are being used, and I was able to see that, so it was cool. The State of the City was awesome, I think everybody did a great job providing where we're at and where we're going. I also had the opportunity to attend the Kasuma CSD Board Meeting, where they honored one of our Public Safety Committee members, Chris Chamber, for his time as a labor representative, and he's recently resigned from that, so that was kind of neat to see him get recognized by the board and his superiors. Then also the street cleanup at Horizon Community Church, I know Vice Mayor was out there, and oh my gosh, that freeway, I think, kicks up every piece of trash and throws it on our side, because it's just, there was quite a bit of trash, I can't remember the amount of trash bags, but 16, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so, but it was good, had a great turnout, and a lot of trash, and so, but appreciated the Youth Commission and the church and Beautification Committee for being out there. Attended the fire station groundbreaking for the CSD, it's a fire station up in Elk Grove, kind of south Elk Grove, that'll likely be servicing our area, should the firefighters that work down here normally get tied up on a call, so Councilmember Papinow and Vice Mayor Sandu were there as well, and it was a great event. And then lastly, was able to attend the Cal City's Legislative Briefing and Bill introduction, and it's early on in the session, but there will be some stuff I'll bring forward to the council just for additional information as we move forward in the process, but obviously lots of legislation regarding housing and things like that that we probably need to keep an eye on, so. And I think that is it.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lozano. I too want to just thank people who made public comment, I appreciate the public giving their input, and hopefully as we are now back to live meetings, we can have more and more people come and participate in this process. Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Robinson, thank you for speaking, and the rest of you for being here. I too want to offer again a condolences to Bill's family. I heard Mike say that he had a fabulous sense of humor, and I was like, that was interesting, I wish I would have got to know that sense of humor, he didn't seem like he was that type of guy, but it's like you just kind of never judge a book by the cover, and I didn't have much interaction with him outside of the council meetings, so sadly, you know, there won't be an opportunity for that. I was wondering, you know, if we could ask Mr. Heinz if, and maybe this is already something that's planned, but depending on, you know, of course, with the permission of the family, but I would like if it's okay with them at some point, if we can post something on city social media, some kind of respectful obituary, just talking about who he was and what he did for the city, and if it's okay with them, if he can.
I'll ask Director Selling to communicate with the family and see if they think that's appropriate.
Yeah, if, I just like, you know, the community to know more about him and, you know, how long he worked here and all those things. I want to thank the church, like Councilman Lozano said, for doing the cleanup, I was not able to attend that day. I haven't missed very few of those, but I was glad to hear you guys made a big impact, I know that area is really bad, but thanks to the Youth Commission and Beautification and the Horizon Church for doing that, and thanks, Craig, thanks, my fellow councilmembers, Lozano and Sandu for being out there and being part of that, and which segues me into just one last thing, just a request, and I probably could have just brought this to you, but since we're talking about it, I was wondering if it'd be possible if we could, especially on council days, but I came in today and there was a lot of garbage and trash around the front walkway into the city hall, and I don't know who's doing it, but, you know, there was, Councilman Vandenberg and I noticed it, and I just, I just want the perception of our city hall to be the best it can, and I don't know if it would be as easy as just having somebody do a little walkthrough before council meetings, or, I mean, it'd be nice if we could do it on a daily basis, but every time I come to city hall, I'm able to find some stuff to pick up and carry in, and anyways, so if, maybe it's a small request, but it would be nice to, you know, show the community how, you know, prideful we are in our city hall, so. With that, I will wrap up my conversation, thank you, everybody, for attending, and we will adjourn at, what is it, 8:55. Good night.